Planning and zoning commission, 7:03 PM. And we're going to start the January 7th, 2021 regular meeting of the Town of planning and zoning commission. Kind of dispense with the preamble, but just please, everyone mute your microphones unless you are speaking. When you do, identify yourself each and every time. So can I have the callers, please mute their microphones? I'm going to call the role, please state your presence. Bruno Maiini.
Present.
Brian Condon.
Present.
Leon Ambrosi.
Present.
Robert Westland. Present. Dominic Panici.
Present.
Nicole Lupo.
Present.
And Ron Schneider is going to be late. Rick Schultz.
Present.
Willa Gresta.
Present.
George Konto- Georgia Kontoas.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud. I know Sarah's here. General public participation. If there are any members of the public that would like to make any comments or address the commission at this time, please make yourselves known. General public participation is for the general public to ask questions or inform the commission of items not on the agenda tonight and are not likely to become and are not likely to come before the commission in the near future. Are there any members of the public that would like to participate in general public participation tonight? Any members of the public hearing none, then we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, number four is for discussion. This is 580 Pepper Street. Now, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give an overview and then I believe Kevin Solely is going to add in.
All right, go ahead, Rick.
Okay, we're talking about 580 Pepper Street at the corner of Pepper and Cambridge. Milton and Goose, a non-toxic, high-end children's furniture manufacturer recently contacted staff, this was last month, to find out what the zoning procedure would be to occupy 9,000 square feet of available space. Milton and Goose's corporate offices are located in Stanford and their existing warehousing manufacturing facilities are in Pennsylvania and Ohio. Corporate wishes to consolidate all facilities and maintain its entire operation in Connecticut. Now, the existing building contains a total floor area of 20,000 square feet and was previously occupied by multiple tenants as office and warehousing, not manufacturing. Milton Goose is requesting to lease 9,000 square feet and plans to use 45 onsite parking spaces and four loading spaces. When staff received the inquiry from the company, it was determined that manufacturing use in the industrial I-2 district is requires an SCP and a public hearing. The applicant then contacted me to see if the SCP requirement could be eliminated and replaced with a staff minor site plan application in accordance with section 7.1.3. However, the minor site plan does not allow for the exemption of P uses. Manufacturing is a SCP use. The applicant still requested to bring this matter to the attention of the full commission to address this matter regarding manufacturing uses. The high level of review required in Monroe, unlike other surrounding towns in the region. Now, I turn your attention because the chairman tonight is going to schedule at least one or two upcoming zoning subcommittee meetings. This is something we've been talking about a long time. But the applicant wants the commission to know that this is something that the commission has to deal with and deal with quickly. They believe manufacturing, when it's just for occupancy, should be processed as a minor site plan, you know, before the planning and zoning staff. Only when there's no major or significant alterations to outside or major addition to the building. So this is a classic example of a partially empty 20,000 square foot office building. This company wants to move in quickly. The zoning requires a special exception permit and a public hearing. So obviously, this is something the commission wants to deal with. We've talked about it for a long time. And we're ready to move forward. At this point, Kevin, did you want to add anything or?
Sure. Thank you, Will. For the record, Kevin Solely, licensed professional engineer in State of Connecticut with Solely Engineering Offices located here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Yeah, Rick, thank you for that summary and just for the commission's benefit, you know, when we, when we looked at this and we evaluated what the, what the applicant was looking to do, you know, we kind of looked at this as the existing industrial building has a warehouse use already in the space, which is a special exception use. So our thought was, you know, in theory, we should be able to process a change of, a change of tenant, change of business application, which would just be processed through the land use office, but then we received some, some, you know, pushback that this would require a full special exception permit application, which would obviously require a different application and a public hearing. And it would just add quite a bit of time to the process. And I think, I think the commissions should certainly, you know, consider something like this where if you have a, a building with where we're replacing one special exception use with another special exception use, it shouldn't necessarily be required to go through a whole public hearing process because frankly, you know, a lot of in this, in this climate right now, when, you know, potential business operators are looking to find a space, if they can come in and say, okay, this, you know, there's a building here, we can get into it in 30 days, that's a, that's a great opportunity. But if, if it's going to take 30, 60, 90 days to go through a special exception permit process in the town of Monroe to simply swap out one use with another, I just think that's, that's going to certainly put the town of Monroe at a significant disadvantage from a business standpoint. You know, I think frankly, you know, these types of operators, you know, these are good manufacturing jobs. It's a good opportunity for, for the community to, to put a good, you know, a really good toy company into a space that again, it was warehousing and now we're proposing to do manufacturing. They're both special exception uses in the zone. We were, we thought a, a simple change of use would be the right way to go, but then, you know, now we're being told it's a full special exception permit application, which again, we just don't think should, should be the case because frankly, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to create a lot of friction and you're going to lose a lot of potential tenants when they can get into a building and trumble in, you know, 10 days by just filling out something over the counter.
Well, thank you, Mr. Solely. I agree with you. It seems like it is pretty much just a change of use. But unfortunately, our hands are tied at the moment. But I would recommend is that Milton and Goose put in an SCP and we can most likely act on it in one meeting. We're going to address these issues in our next subcommittee meeting as far as streamlining and decreasing the amount of paperwork, regulations and public hearings needed for these minor, relatively minor changes in use.
So, so thank you, Chairman O'Reilly for that direction, just so, so we can review this with the commission. If we file a special exception permit tomorrow, that wouldn't get accepted until the 21st and the public hearing likely wouldn't be scheduled until the, the, I don't even think it could be, be done by the 18th of February, just from a notice standpoint. So we wouldn't be before you until March. And frankly, I don't think this tenant is going to hang around for that time.
Well, Will, is that how the schedule will work? Is it that time consuming?
Well, it goes from the, there's a lot of factors that go into time. There is the noticing requirements, which are the main time factor because it has to be noticed in the newspaper the two weeks prior to the meeting date that the hearing would be on. So.
Well.
It's a minimum of that time just for that purposes. And the other thing that factors into time at the present moment is the current schedule, what's on the docket, but that doesn't mean we couldn't push something, but, but the, the main thing is the noticing requirements and the submission of the application and and there are other issues related to this that are not quite being covered here, but we could accommodate timing best as we can.
All right. Well, unfortunately, I think that's the way we're going to have to go. I don't see any other way around it.
Okay. So just so, so, so we're clear and we can obviously relay this back to the property owner. Really, any change of use for any industrial building requires a special exception permit modification.
Depends on what.
Is that true, Will? Well, for those uses, warehousing?
There's no blanket statement like that. It depends on what it is. I mean, there's a big difference between a warehouse and a manufacturer and there are industrial district performance standards that relate to those things. I mean, the operations of a manufacturer are different than a warehouse. The way it works is if you have a permitted use, if this was a manufacturing use permitted in the building, this would have been a simple zoning permit, just like it is in the other towns. If it isn't established as such in the other towns or Monroe, it's going to go through a permit process. So if this was approved as a manufacturer, changing the manufacturer would have been easy.
Right, but, but in Monroe, the only permitted use that doesn't require a special exception in the industrial district is office.
Well, that's a different issue, Kevin. If, if the commission wants to change the permits required for different uses, they're at liberty to do that with changing the code.
And that's what the plan is at this point. We are going to.
Yeah, Commissioner Ambrosi, I believe that's what Mike's trying to tell you, Kevin, is that we're going to look at the code.
That's great. I think that's certainly something the commission should consider.
Thank you. Well, well, let's move on to the public hearings that we have scheduled for tonight. First one, number five on the agenda is SCP 2020-02, file 1622A, which is 556 Pepper Street. This is reconvened from 12/3/2020. And this is a special exception permit for a site development plan application to convert a portion of an existing non-conforming single family to a permitted landscaping business. Where you should all be familiar with this application. I think it should be wrapping up now. Will, do we have any new exhibits?
Yes. Exhibit 10, ART health power comments. Exhibit 11, revised site plan from the applicant. Exhibit 12, ART town engineer updated comments and exhibit 13, updated PNZ ART comments. That was all.
So for the applicant, we have Mr. Rios.
Good, good evening, committee.
Good evening.
Mr. Rios.
Georgia, can you put up the plan, please? Can you blow up towards the, the left side?
So Will, can you go over the outstanding issues on this?
Okay. So since the last time we did get a revised plan, we only got one of the two plans that were in the application. Many of the revisions to the plan that you're seeing on the screen were made. There were several other revisions that were still outstanding from, that really were on the other plan that was in the application. And for the most part, at least on my comments, most of them are housekeeping things. There are a few zoning complaints, questions that need to be confirmed. In addition, you have a memo from the town engineer. You could review. But the, the main things are aligning mine, number two gives you what needs to be considered. And that's confirmation of the plans from inland bounds. Again, that can be conditional. Population of the B100, that obviously would be conditional. There's the town engineer's comments, which you can go over tonight. He has a bond recommendation and then the revisions to the site plan based on my memo, which again are, can be conditional.
Okay. Mr. Rios, do you have any problems with complying with the conditions that are, have been put forward by the Mr. Gresta?
No, Mr. Riley, I'm here to comply with the town with any requests.
You have a copy of the planning and zoning administrators' comments?
I do have the updated review from January 6th, yeah, from yesterday.
Okay, good. Do you have a copy of the town engineer's comments as well?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I noticed is handicap accessible parking should be provided. Is that provided on them? I can't really see that.
Now that the, the spaces aren't delineated, that was what really was on the other map.
Was on the other map, okay.
I mean, well, the delineation, the parking was. Whether it meets handicap is another comment, but I also need to confirm with the building inspector whether this is subject to that or not, given the size.
Okay.
But if anything, it would be one, one of the spaces, one of the four spaces that are required would be handicap.
Another comment by the engineer says that the layout does not allow for the truck access to the dumpsters to turn around. Mr. Rios?
Yeah. The, my engineer draw a the transition of the truck, how are you gonna get into the backside of the parking lot and back it up in order to park the dumpster is there on the drawing?
Is it on this drawing or is it on the other drawing?
On this drawing.
I really can't see it.
Georgia, can you zoom in on the, the part of the bottom without the house?
It's a very thin line on the shape of a V.
Yeah, I see it. So there's an arcing line from the mid of the driveway over by the street by where R is. It arcs upwards towards the steps of the deck and it arcs down towards the bottom of the right-hand corner.
Okay.
And that's not the traditional way to show it, but.
Okay, it looks like the rest are all housekeeping. Mr. Rios, are you aware of the bond? That is recommended.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Riley, I have spoken with Mr. Grace this afternoon in regards of that. And we have come up with the plan on getting a check from my bank and submitted to the town.
Okay, great. Well, I'm just going to poll the commissioners then for any further questions. So it's I guess Bruno Maiini, go, you can go first.
Well, thank you, Mike. I'm actually all set. Everything seems like, I don't know, Mike, Mike kind of asked the question, so I'm all set.
Okay, Commissioner Condon.
No questions.
Commissioner Ambrosi. Leon, any questions? I don't hear anything there.
Oh, Mike, no questions for me.
Okay, Rob Westland, Commissioner, Commissioner Westland, any questions?
None at this time.
I don't have any others and I think we're the five that started on this, correct, Will?
Yeah, it's the regular.
All right. So then, Mr. Rios, would you like to close the hearing now?
Mike, before you do that, I don't know if there's anyone here for it, but just formality, this is a public hearing.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment either for against this SCP? Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If not, then I would like to close the, close the public hearing tonight.
Mike, is Mr. Rios in agreement to handle everything with the staff?
Yes.
All right, then I'm good.
Then we'll close the hearing.
Close it.
Move on to next item on the agenda. Which I don't.
Thank you, committee.
Do not think we're going to, I don't think the applicant is here for SCP 2020-01, file number 1621A McDonald's.
No, I talked to the attorney today or I emailed with him today. And he's still resolving an issue with the ARB. And he hopes to have that done next week and then, and tomorrow, I think we're going to connect and figure out the schedule going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gresta. We'll move on to number seven, public hearing. This is a zone change, ZCA 2020-03, file number 1016D, 1585 Monroe Turnpike. This is the new zone proposed, an SB2 district. That is in conjunction with public hearing number eight, RAA 2020-04, file number 1011E, which is a text amendment. It's the same applicant, it's the same address, so probably like we did last time, be moving back and forth between the two. Will, do you have any new items for these applications?
Well, we have to really do them separately.
Well, we will do them separately, but the information will probably cover both.
The application zoning boundary amendment 2020-03, file 1016D, additional exhibits, exhibit 14, applicant response to comments. Exhibit 15, additional applicant response to comments. Exhibit 16, stormwater management plan. Exhibit 17, site plans and updated. Exhibit 18, ART engineer updated comments. 19, ART updated planning, planning zoning comment. That's all.
And for the applicant, who do we have here tonight?
One second. We also have just give me two seconds before we do. That's all, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something? This is Rick.
Yes, go ahead, Rick.
As directed by the commission, we made a referral to Special Counsel Barber. She's here tonight to review the proposal and she said, she's recommending that the application should move forward. There, there are no hiccups with the applications.
Oh, well, thank you. And who do we have for the applicant tonight?
Mr. Chairman, it's John Kimball and Jill Kimball. 262 Westport Road in Easton. Just to, so that we keep the record clear, we'd actually like to, to, if it's, if it works for the commission, we would like to open the hearing for item number eight on the agenda because it, the zone text amendment is important to get through prior to the change of zone application. So if, if we, if we kind of can't get through the zone text amendment, there'd be no reason spending the time with the commission or wasting the commission's time on, on item seven. So just to keep the record clear, is it okay that we adjourned seven, that you would adjourn seven and open eight, please?
Yes, Will, are there any new exhibits for the number eight?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kimball.
Okay. Chairman O'Reilly. We, we've obviously, you know, been in front of the commission, made, you know, several presentations. The, you know, the, we were waiting for comments from Attorney Schellenberg and Willa Gresta. Apparently, Attorney Schellenberg doesn't have any comments and we haven't received anything from Will since the last meeting. I'm not sure if that means that there are no comments or if he was waiting for Attorney Schellenberg to issue her comments in order for him to issue his comments because we would like to address, you know, any comments that he has outstanding. We felt the commission seemed to be in favor generally of the application. And, you know, and, and maybe, you know, we've already covered everything that Will would have commented on. So I guess I'm asking through the chair if Will's got any comments.
Well, the attorney's comments basically were just technical in that, are you proceeding along the right lines of these right applications? And they are apparently. So then I'm okay to go with Will for his, to let Will go through his comments.
Um, I, I don't really have any more comments than I, than I had at the, the previous meeting, which was enlightening on the regards to the, the permitting process going forward. As it is proposed, not all the, the development would be subject to an SCP potentially. And, you know, since the last hearing and in discussions with Attorney Schellenberg and I, and also I think with you, John, it kind of made sense that that the redevelopment of the property should follow an SCP throughout the process and not have disjuncted reviews that might not have that level of review. And maybe that's only for the first level to get it redeveloped. And then after that, that would be different, but so I, I do think the commission should consider the redevelopment should be staying in the course of, you know, a series of SEPs or amendments to the master plan as it moves forward and gets redeveloped.
Okay, I think Mr. Kimball has agreed to that.
Yeah, yes, we, I think we stayed on the record. Yeah, yes, we, I think we stayed on the record of last meeting that. We would be okay with all, all of the applications relative, so all the designations in the use table. Converting to SCP. Designations instead of SDP. And so that, that would be an acceptable change to, to us to move this forward.
All right, let me poll the commissioners.
So that would be some of my comments which are really tactical in nature, so there's obviously policy statements, but you all have to. You know, think about and decide.
Let's go through the commissioners now for any questions. So now we're doing public hearing number eight, this is a text change. Start with Bruno Maiene.
No questions.
Ryan Condon?
No questions.
Leon Ambrosi?
I just want to get into the commercial parking, John. I just. What do you plan to do with the commercial parking there again?
So. It's John Kimball for the record. So the commercial parking would entail. Having an area that's screened from Route 111, that's 300 feet back from Route 111, according to the design standards. Screened from public visibility. And in that area, we would have an attendant operated. Gate controlled. Space. Light, lighted and secured. Parking area, which would, every space would be numbered, and people would basically. Rent individual spaces on a, on a, you know, period by period basis. It could be monthly, it could be. Only, it could be annually. We're thinking that it would be a great spot for, you know. Boat and trailer parking because of the proximity of Lake Zor. It could be a good spot for RV parking, that kind of thing. Also. It could be a place for somebody to park, you know, a. Like a tractor trailer, like the two that are still parked over on Cottage Street. This would give them a legal place to park instead of parking in a, you know. At the end of a town road. So we're hoping that there would be. And there are. You know, RVs and boats parked. You know, at the other self-storage facility, you know, the side of town. And, and, and a lot of the self-storage facilities, there are boats and, and. RVs and larger vehicles parked. This would give our local residents a place to park.
The only concern I have, John, is I don't want it to turn into where people are parking excavators, construction equipment. Construction trailers. That's, that's my concern. I, I don't, I can understand your point with RVs and maybe a little tractor trailer parking and. Boats and stuff like that. I just don't want this to turn into be a construction yard. And that's going to go throughout the whole property, right?
Right, well, it, it, there are certain areas, it's gotta be 75 feet from a. It's gotta be 75 feet from residential zone, 300 feet from Route 111. So yeah. It, um, you know, we do have, it is permitted, according to the way we wrote the regulations for construction. And/or trailers to be parked. On the property. In designated spaces. That doesn't make it a construction yard, we're not. You know, but it, you know, we're kind of viewing this as. You know, if, if we've got it screened from the road and you need to park your construction trailer or your, you know, your landscape trailer. It's much better to park it here in a controlled designated space than it is to park it. In half of the residential neighborhoods around town where you've got numerous zoning complaints, you know. So, you know, I, I don't think. You know, I don't think that any trailer has to be registered, everything. Any vehicle that can be registered has to be registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles. We put that in as a, as a requirement. But, you know, I, I don't think. You know, having like a. Like a, like a lull forklift or something like that is gonna be. We don't view that as a problem. We view that as an opportunity for somebody to be able to park a, a piece of equipment legally. I mean, I drive up Fan Hill Road. And there's three pieces of equipment parked. There's a Skylift and a Backhoe and a. Something else parked in somebody's yard. They've been there for 20 years now. And, you know, those people have no legal place. If you told them to get, to, to move them, they don't have a place to park them. So that, that's a, that's a, we're, we're just trying to, you know, give people a legal place to park. And again, it would have to be in a designated space.
Yeah. You know, I, I understand all that. I just don't want it to turn into where people are going to turn into, use it as a construction yard. And what they'll do is park their vehicles there. They don't have to have a storefront because it's gonna leave all their vehicles there. They're gonna come in every day and go out every day, bring their excavator in, bring their whatever in, and, and park it there. And that's what I, I don't think that's what the town wants for down there. I mean, I don't believe that I want that for down there. I don't mind, like you said, for the, you know, the RVs and the boat people and stuff like that. I just don't want this to turn into a construction yard, and it could turn into a construction yard.
Yeah, I, I see your point, and. You know, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I do understand it, and. You know, I, I think that. You know, having a paved and designated space, you know. Whether somebody parks a tractor trailer or a piece of equipment and comes in and gets it and. Goes out and runs, runs, you know, delivers goods. You know, I, I think it's, 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 you know, again. You know, it has to be fully screened from the road so that it's not visible and on eyesore to the town. And I think, I think we can do that adequately. If we can't, we're not allowed to do it, and that's, I think, an important factor here. If we can't screen it appropriately so that you can't see it. We won't be allowed to do it because that's one of the conditions of our, that we've imposed on ourselves relative to the commercial parking. So you, if, if you can see that vehicle from, you know, from, from offsite, we're not allowed to have it there.
So this is Commissioner O'Reilly. So you, John, you're just, you're not allowing building materials. These are just operational vehicles. That are intact, correct?
Correct, John Kimball for the record, yes, correct. It, it would be. Operational vehicles, no parts of equipment, no pieces of equipment, no. Disabled junk equipment, no repairs are to be done on the premises. You know, this is basically for the parking of a, of a piece of equipment that's able to move. Either on a trailer or, you know, to be loaded on a trailer and moved, you know, off the site, but it's. It's not for equipment plus a load of brick or a load of building materials. It's only for the equipment.
Mike, I have a couple of questions that just popped in my head. If, if you're done. Leon? If Leon's done, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Bruno. I can come back.
Thanks, Leon. Mr. Kimball, you just said paved. Last time we discussed that you said that the paving at the. At the. Stevenson was adequate.
Right.
That is already, it is already paved where we're looking. Oh, sorry, Jill Kimball. It's already paved where we're looking at putting the, putting the parking.
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood. I thought you were gonna pave it.
No.
Okay. Another question, you said you're gonna screen it, but if somebody has an excavator on the top of a. On top of a trailer. How high is your screen gonna be?
And again, that's, that's an important consideration. We're, we're planning a berm and a trade screen. And. The, the maximum height that we can put on that site would be basically 13 foot eight. Because that would be the same height that would be able to be pulled on a road legal. Load out on this, out on Route 111. So.
So you're gonna need roughly like, rough numbers, like a 14 foot screening?
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we, yes, we, we could, we could do, you know, four or six foot berm and, and eight foot trees. We could do 10 and 12 foot trees. You know, what we generally do is a, is a, is a robust mix of a bunch of different varieties of evergreens. Some low evergreens, some taller evergreens, a lot of different varieties. So if there's a blatant one, we don't lose the entire screen. We don't just soldier course. You know, a group of green giant arborvitae's or something like that, but. The requirement that we have to meet, the threshold or the standard is that it has to be screened and cannot be viewed from the road. So, you know.
You're not proposing any fencing, right?
Well, the, the lot would be. There'd be a perimeter fence, and I think actually the neighbors. Have asked us to make sure that we've fenced certain portions of the property, but the fencing would be inside the screening. But yeah, I mean, for security reasons, you don't want people going in and, you know, opening up 15 RVs and taking their valuables out, you know?
No, 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 I'm just trying to understand exactly how you're going about this. That's all.
Yep. It's kind of like your self-storage facilities that you have around town already. You know, they fenced the perimeter of those, they put an access gate, there's a corridor, five access.
And that, but I'm also, I'm also in the viewpoint where I don't want a 20 foot fence.
Oh, no, no, no. The fence would have to meet all the regulations of zoning, so it'd be like a, a, you know, six foot. Fence, you know, basically that, it's the same fence that, that's kind of there on the site. I don't know if you. And the one that the commission approved when the Connecticut Light and Power. Used it as a laydown yard for the pole construction, you know, it, it, it already surrounds the perimeter of the property.
Okay. And you said there's gonna be no storage of materials, and, and, and that's great. What if? What if? Someone on their tractor trailer decide, on their, on their trailer. Instead of putting an excavator on it, decides to put a load of brick, a load of stone, a load of something and park it. That, to me. Would consider storing materials. Even though it's not on the ground, it would be on someone's trailer, but to me. And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but to me, that's considered, I would consider that storing materials. And I just don't know what your process is of allowing, or who's gonna be at the gate, or who's gonna say, hey, you can't do that. I, I just don't know your, what, what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, well, I think the first thing to do with respect to storing materials might be to. Look at the site. From a previous approval standpoint, the site since from. 1978 on receives seven or eight different approvals. Granting outside storage of building materials. Basically, all over the site. So we start with kind of that underlying. Pre-existing non-conforming use. So already the site's got 10 or 13 acres of. Ground on which, you know, by right today, without going through any of these processes or zone changes. We could lay down materials on the entire site. So. When we do the commercial parking facility, we've got to come in with a specific SCP application. When we come in with that SCP application. That application can then. Receive conditions relative to that approval, because you, we can't. Just because we're getting the zone changed doesn't mean we can do the commercial parking. Then we have to come in with SCP. When you grant the SCP, you get to view all the attributes of it, the stormwater control, the fence, the, the landscape. And also. You can put conditions on an SCP if you, you know, feel justified that, you know. There can't be building, you know, trailers can only include equipment and not building materials. That could be a condition that you would attach to an SCP. So, you know, I think it's. I think we are, you know, a little bit split in hairs, but I think the. You know, we understand what the commission is looking for, and we. You know, we're not looking to, to, to make a mess of the site. We're looking to provide a, a legal outlet for something that's already done in our town.
I, I totally understand all that. I just want to make sure. And I guess we would do that in the permitting process, that we don't, that we don't say it's gonna be one thing, and then it turns out to be another thing. I don't want us, that we can dig a whole 10 feet, and then all of a sudden we start digging this whole 20, 30 feet. You know what I mean? I wanna, I wanna make sure that we keep it. Pretty uniform from day one. That, that's just where I'm getting at, and, and. That's great. I'm all set, Leon, back to you.
Yeah, John, are you willing to put like a weight limit on, on what could be stored there?
Weight limit, why?
Vehicles. Well, because if, you know, I, I, you know, there's some huge excavators out there and stuff that you could store there. And they're, you know, they're big loads, they're wide loads. You know, if this can turn, it turns into this, I mean. You know, I, I just, like I said, we have already issues on, on some parts of, of a town where. We gave approvals and it's turned into a disaster. As a construction yard. And I just don't want to see this Stevenson property, I mean, when we went through this to try to do all this with you and work through this. I don't want this to turn into be another disaster with a big construction yard. And the thing is, it goes with the property, and I understand that right now that you're representing the property, that doesn't mean who represents it down the road if you sell off the parcels, so. I mean, this commission really has to look at that this doesn't turn into be a big construction yard.
Well, I guess, you know, like, one of the questions is. And I understand that, like, you know, if we did it as a retail equipment sales area, would we, you know. And this was a equipment dealer, it would be a B2 use, which is currently zoned. And then you could park the equipment, so. I, I'm not, you know, look, I'm sensitive to your, to your concerns. I just, I don't know that. You know, like. That the size of the piece of equipment, there, there are certain limiting factors. If we, if we lock it in at a 13 eight maximum height. That will in and of itself eliminate an excavator that's bigger than, you know, like a. A 45 metric ton excavator, because you can't fit that on a trailer, it would have to be. Taken apart in pieces and moved, and then therefore it doesn't comply with this regulation, because we're only talking about. You know, workable construction equipment, not parts, pieces, or, or. Or, you know, so I think, yeah, we, we definitely. So I think it, it limits itself. You're not gonna get a D8 bulldozer because you can't fit it on a, on a trailer at 13 eight, you know. So there, there's a number of things that, you know, that will automatically be limited based on, on what the guidelines are that we have. I don't find that, that the people that own a million dollar excavator. Are the ones that are, you know, are necessarily your problem, you know, it's the, it's the. The mini, you know, 47 mini excavators and a leaf vac and a, you know, that kind of equipment that tends to be more of a nuisance and an eyesore. Than the big equipment, but you know, if you wanted to condition it and put a weight limit on it, I'd be, you know. Open to listening to what weight limit you wanted to put on it, you know?
All right, let's. We go to some of the other commissioners for some input.
Uh, Commissioner Westland.
All right. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that this is necessarily the answer to the equipment that is, you know, currently spread haphazardly across town. However, it, it is a good, a good viable option. That's, that's the good news. If, if somebody has something and we need them to move it and they have a place to go. So that's the good news on that. Um, and, you know, I'm not absolutely in love with this project, but look what's going on down there now, you know? Something has to happen with it. Um, and my, my concerns kind of mirror, uh, Commissioner Ambrosi's. However, if there's, you know, adequate stormwater, uh, catchment systems in place, then I'm good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Panici.
Mike, I have no more questions than the questions I've already asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Schneider.
Questions?
No questions. Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I had one or two questions that kind of bounced off what, um, Commissioner Ambrosi, Westland and Maia already asked. Um, Mr. Kimball, in regards to the, the parking spaces, do we have any idea of how big they're going to be with the size of the spaces will be? To determine what size vehicle could particularly fit there?
Yes, again, John Kimball, for the record, the, wh- wh- what we had laid out initially was a space that was uh, sixteen feet wide and forty feet long. And that was based on when we did the, um, uh, All-Star Transportation Bus Barn, we laid their spaces out at fourteen feet wide and forty feet long. But those are being parked by one single company. So we just felt that we should leave two more feet of room. Um, and then a tractor trailer would actually rent two spaces so that there's, their space could be, um, sixteen feet wide and eighty feet long. So there's not that many of those spaces available that go back to back, but that's kind of how the parking would lay out.
Okay. So potentially someone could purchase or rent two side by side and park a much larger piece of equipment. Like some of us are concerned about, um, going down there. Okay. And then in terms of the screening, I understand the, the max of the trucks are gonna be thirteen eight. Um, I understand from the road, the berm with the fencing or the trees, how are we gonna screen coming down one eleven? Cause right now you can see right through the back of the property there.
Right. And, um, excuse me? Yeah, it's John Kimball again. Um, so the, uh, a- again, the, the screening is, is gonna be challenging. Uh, along one eleven. It may limit, uh, what we can do in the, um, in the commercial parking altogether. Um, we could ask DOT for permission to, um, plant on the top of the embankment so that we can get some small, um, trees in the top of the embankment. Uh, but we'd have to, that would have to be something that we would have to bring in and, and work through as part of the approval. And we'd also have to provide exhibits to the commission and the commission would have to be satisfied that no matter where they're looking from on one eleven, they couldn't see it. Either we'd have to create a higher berm. It may be that we'd have to put multiple rows of berms in the parking lot in order to, 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 to shield each row of vehicles, which then dovetails with some of the, um, regulations requiring, uh, internal parking lot landscaping. So, you know, the regulations kind of work a little bit hand in hand, but no, I mean, w- we're, we're aware that the topography is gonna make this challenging, but if we can't over, and that's the beauty of it. If we can't overcome that challenge, you don't approve it, you know? Um, doesn't mean we have to deny it at the, at the inception stage. This means that we have a, a heavy lift when we bring in an SCP to make sure that you're comfortable, that we've addressed all those concerns. And with respect to getting a double wide space, you can't get a vehicle that's thirty feet wide on the roads in the state of Connecticut. So there's nothing that we bring in there that's gonna be, you know, more than sixteen feet wide, sixteen feet wider than the maximum of anything that's gonna even run on a wide load.
Right. Okay. Thank you. No other questions?
Okay. Um, I don't have any other questions either. I'm gonna open it up to the public at this point. If there are any members of the public that would like to address the commission regarding this particular application, um, please let yourselves be known now. Uh, once again, are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission or present evidence, the other for or against this application? Please make yourself. I can hear you, Mr. Benofsky.
Yes, I have a number of things I'd like to discuss.
Just for the record, name and address.
Ron Benofsky, seventy-six Polly Place in Monroe. Uh, is this property currently under the ownership of, of one person? Are we talking about?
The commission. Now, I, I personally am not, I don't know the answer to that. The applicant, if he wishes to, can answer your questions. Um, if you wanna go ahead with all of the questions and then we'll give the applicant a chance at the end.
I could do that. What, and listening to this and I, I've, I've listened in on, uh, at least one of the other uh, meetings regarding this property. And I've, I've watched this property evolve. I've been in town for forty-seven years. I remember when Stevenson lumber applied for the, uh, the sheds just to store additional lumber. And then they, uh, put in a building of, uh, the, um, mill factory. And it just kept going and going and going and, and it, uh, evolved into something that the planning and zoning commissions at that time could never possibly have anticipated. Uh, and, and, and hearing some of the discussion that's gone on so far tonight, if you're looking for a vision of what construction large, log, uh, yards look like, uh, you can go just down the street and look at the Mondo property, which is probably a pretty neat piece of property can says, uh, uh, as, as you, as neat as you could expect from a construction yard. Uh, but that can turn into a nightmare real easily. If you wanna see something, what, what smaller lots look like is construction yards, say fifty by a hundred or a hundred by a hundred. You can take a ride through Bridgeport. They've got them all over the place. You can't believe what they have down there and what they put in them and how they try to screen them. They weave, you could weave through a, a, a page fence. You could weave little slats. Uh, and, and they, they get torn down, they maintain, they're not maintained and everything. Uh, you could, you could, you can get a good vision of what a construction yard could easily turn into. Who would monitor what goes in and out of there? Uh, it, it sounds like a, a, a legal nightmare just to figure out what you can put in there. You have to measure it. The, 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 the topography is a problem because you, you, everything you look at down there, I can't imagine what size fencing you would need or trees you would need to screen it off. Probably a hundred feet, uh, wouldn't be enough. It's, it sounds like what the town needs is something with some vision. This is a gateway to the town, really. Uh, it's the gateway starting at, at the junction with thirty-four and, and, uh, whatever. It's an opportunity for the town to look at something that's gonna enhance property values and make the town look like something other, whether it's what, than what it's gradually turning into. Uh, we could see what a, a large piece of property like this, even with a, with a plan that's spread over many years can look like in a very short period of time. Just look at Pepper Street and the industrial zone. It's a hodgepodge of development over the years that is always, is difficult to control. It gets out of control. Uh, and, uh, I just can't envision something here, this, this large not being given some very professional and independent consideration and review by way of a P O C D with professional, uh, uh, evaluation in, in looking at all of the aspects of the town, present, future, and what is the best use for a town that essentially is, you might as well say ninety-five plus percent developed. It's a rare piece of property that still has some possibilities. It's, if, if we put some imagination to it. We might even wanna use it for a town piece of public property. We still have no idea what we're gonna do long term for, for, uh, a, a sanitary treatment plant. Uh, is, is that a, a good consideration? I don't know. Is that something we need? Yeah. Uh, where would you put it? You gotta have a big piece of available property that has access to a big piece of water. Now, I don't know how you would solve that environmentally with a, with a treatment plant, but the, the only big body of water we have in, in Monroe is the Paquonic River or the, uh, the Husatonic River. Uh, y- you gotta look at some things. You gotta look at the town as a whole when you have a piece of property like this and not just develop it one by one, a piece by piece, like the industrial zone has turned into, Pepper Street's turned into, and most of Main Street is on its way to being turned into. That's nonsense. I've had enough of that. I've seen it for forty-seven years. It, it just is a, a, a piece by piece, little by little, developing the town for the benefit of a few businesses that in the end, uh, don't, don't really add anything to the town. Uh, and very difficult to control and monitor, very difficult to, to zone and approve because of the myriad of, uh, things that have to be considered. You develop one section, it makes it impossible to develop another section. You've got watershed, uh, groundwater, all kinds of things to consider. You've got the, the current, uh, pollution on the property, the, uh, I, I, I seem to remember this was a, uh, what do they call them? A zone, uh, the brownfield zone, uh, that's got an, got an issue there. That is always gonna be a problem in terms of any water or, or watershed, uh, related to that property or any other piece on there. They, they, they are interrelated. It's hard to, to, uh, uh, piece by piece, look at this property and say you're gonna develop it in the best, for the best purpose of the town. It's gotta take a long-term, large piece of property, consider it as a large piece of property for an area of, of development. Uh, it might even affect the neighbor, uh, well, I'm sure it does affect neighboring pieces there. I don't know how it, uh, interfaces with the, or whether the, uh, old Trust Tech is part of this a piece of property or not, but it, but it certainly is, is gonna provide, uh, some consideration environmentally. It needs an environmental impact as, as a large piece of property, uh, to be considered. I, I would like to, to know that the inland wetlands and, and somebody more than just a developer coming in there to chop it up into pieces for parking large pieces of equipment. There's no way to make that look good and there's no way to screen it out. I don't care what you put in there. Uh, it's, it's, it's the elevation of one eleven at that point is, and looking down at the, uh, areas where they used to have the, uh, the lumber sheds, it must be at least a fifty foot, uh, fifty foot, maybe seventy-five or a hundred foot, uh, uh, grade drop there. Uh, this is not ready for prime time. This should be considered and should be part of a P O C D long-term development. And I, I don't know that it is or it isn't, but it certainly should be if it isn't. And, and this kind of discussion really is, is too early to even consider until that kind of an evaluation is done. And, and I'd still like to know if, if anybody has the answer. I don't know if they do. Is the old Trust Tech part of this property? And is all of that old Stevenson property which has, has the, uh, brownfield, uh, attached to a, a large section of it? Still part of this? Can anybody answer that?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Benofsky. Um, I'm gonna, uh, let the applicant answer that if he so desires.
Thank you, Chairman. It's John Kimball for the record. Um, thank you for your comments. The, uh, the property is currently under forty and a half acres under single ownership, um, with, with the, the company name of Lumberyard LLC. Um, the Trust Tech property is, uh, is a port, is definitely a portion of the forty and a half acres. And the, um, the, uh, brownfields, uh, that you mentioned, um, over the past two years while we've been winding our way through this process, uh, all the good news is that all of the, uh, issues relative to the soil have been remediated and our three quarters of groundwater monitoring, uh, have come up clean. So we have a very, uh, responsible own, ownership, uh, team that has gone to great lengths to clean up the property. So it's on its way to becoming a much better, uh, property and gateway to, for the town of Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is William Wiley. I live at sixteen oh nine Monroe, Monroe Turnpike. I'd like to correct Mr. Benofsky's point. Uh, for the record, the Mondo properties are currently under zoning violation of site development plans as well as wetlands violations. So much for gateway to Monroe. This is all hidden from view. It has been ongoing for almost four years now without any resolution. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Wiley. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application?
Yes, uh, this is Debbie Dragonetti, uh, one fifty-six Old Zor Road. I submitted a letter, um, to be read into the minutes, but, um, I haven't heard any mention of it. So I'm assuming it wasn't received or something. Um, I do have some concerns about, um, these applications. I live down the street from what was Stevenson lumber and, um, I agree with a lot of Mr. Benofsky's comments. Um, I would rather see it, I mean, I know the owner wouldn't, but I'd rather see it stay the way it is now than have something um, slapped in there very quickly. Uh, I'm concerned about trucks parking there. I mean, I don't know. Those two tractor trailers that park illegally, I guess, on Cottage Street, I don't see why they're gonna wanna park there and have to pay for it. I'm assuming they park for free on Cottage Street. And I also, I think that a lot of boats, um, are kept at Jensen, which is, is like a very short walking distance, um, to the Stevenson property. So I don't know how much that would help. I'm concerned about, um, noise and traffic because we all know, you know, Old Zor Road is a freeway and it's supposed to be no through trucks, which is not enforced. Um, there's a, a back entrance to Stevenson, the Stevenson property, um, on Old Zor. And I think I read that that would be utilized in some way. Um, I'm also concerned about pollution, especially if, you know, I don't know if the, um, if the use of a gate means that it won't be accessible twenty-four hours. Uh, cause I'm thinking of maybe trucks idling on that property, um, the noise and the pollution from that. And, um, I don't know how the neighbors on Whispering Pines, I just think they're gonna be affected in so many ways from a lot of these proposals. I'm also concerned about, um, this turning into another excavation site, you know, considering the history um, of this developer and and how things have been going in Monroe as far as illegal activities and, um, you know, what is kind of overlooked or, or it's left alone unless somebody complains about it, somebody who has a lawyer. Um, so I want these things to be taken into account. Um, and I also agree with Mr. Wiley. I can, you can kind of see from the road that Mondo is already doing some of the things that, you know, they're requesting a zone change or something for. There's already things going on there that are pretty obvious. And I also, I hike right in on the property right behind there and I guess I can see some of the things going on. But anyway, in regard to the Stevenson property, um, I would also be very concerned about any industrial things going on there. And, uh, you know, we already have excavators and landscapes. And, you know, we already have excavators and landscapers on this road and I don't think any of them are going to want to park on the Stevenson property and pay extra because I also once had a sanitation company a few doors down from me that went out of business once zoning enforced them to, you know, and finally disallowed them from parking all the sanitation trucks on their property two driveways away. I'm also concerned about the traffic with the trucks because there are a lot of, when school's in session, there's a lot of bus stops on this street and it's a narrow street. You take your life into your own hands if you walk or bicycle on it. You really can't bicycle on it. So anyway, I appreciate your taking these issues under consideration and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Dragonetti. Will, did we have that letter? Carolina?
No.
Georgia, are you?
We don't have the letter?
I said, I'm not aware of it. I was asking Georgia, she was.
I submitted it. It was probably about 5:30 PM, but it said you could submit something up to an hour before the meeting. So I didn't know if that was too late, but.
Oh, yeah, it's in the office at 5:30.
What?
We wouldn't be receiving things after closes the town hall.
I saw on the instructions it said they can be submitted up to an hour before the meeting begins.
Yeah, I mean, we can receive it and put it in the file.
Oh, okay.
Does your, does your letter say anything more than what you verbally made? Because that's just as good as the written letter.
It's about the same, yes. So it doesn't say anything more, I don't think.
Right, so we can, we can put the letter in as an exhibit and you've reflected on the record that that letter reflects your verbal comment.
All right, thank you.
Now you speak. Say, this is Bob Bernaska.
This is Bob Bernaska. Hello, this is Bob Bernaska, 99 Bagburn Road. My concern is that, it's my understanding that the proposal will include an entrance to the now Stevenson property off of Old Zor Road. And Old Zor Road is, as Mrs. Dragonetti has indicated, a residential area and there are children that wait at the bus stop on Old Zor and Bagburn Hill every day. And if there's, if there's a lot of truck traffic on that road, I fear for the safety of the residents and the children waiting for that bus. I have no problem with the trucks that are going to be involved using the 111 road. And as I have noticed is that people often use the Old Zor Road as a entrance to the southern part of 111 to avoid the steep hill on 111 there. So my concern is with that entrance on Old Zor Road, and I would be very happy if that entrance was not allowed and that the truck traffic would be used, would be allowed only to use 111.
Thank you, Mr. Bernaska.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kimball, both of those entrances going to be used for truck traffic?
Chairman, it's John Kimball for the record. The Old Zor entrance was granted by special exception permit in 1987 and used for 30 years without incident for bringing trusses in and out of the Trust Tech building at 421 Old Zor Road. There was never a left-turn-only sign coming out of that property, but that would be something when we got to the site plan approval standpoint that we would have to reconcile with the commission if we were bringing in a different use. But yes, both, there's actually three entrances to the property, two on 111 and one on Old Zor. And, you know, they, you know, honestly, they use them for 30 years. It's just been the fact that they haven't been used, that people kind of forget about it, you know?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimball. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application?
If I may, I'd like to comment on Mr. Kimball's remarks. If there was a left-turn-only sign out of that entrance on Old Zor that would put the traffic back onto 111, that would be fine. I've lived here since 1975, so I'm very familiar with the traffic from Stevenson Lumber. And at times, there was a problem with traffic from Stevenson Lumber. But typically, the people who use Stevenson Lumber use them early in the morning or late at night, not when the children were at the bus stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernaska.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Lois Spence of 29 Partridge Drive. I just had a comment or two on the allowed permitted, the proposed permitted activities. And number six is the Town of Monroe governmental service facilities, including but not limited to DPW Yard, Dog Pound and Transfer Station. I didn't know if anybody had really thought how involved that could be. First thing that came to mind, to my mind, was the Spring Hill Transfer Station. Do I want that there? That like.
Sorry, was the transfer station removed in our last?
That wasn't the copy that I received from when we were given this, Wetlands was given this two hours before our meeting and that was in it at the time. Was transfer station removed?
It's supposed to be removed.
Yeah, it's John Kimball. Yes, we submitted a revised application, removed Public Works Transfer Station and Dog Pound from the permitted uses.
Awesome, thank you. One more question, and that is, listening to the previous conversation about removing the requirement for S E Ps on certain activities. I'm not terribly familiar with it, but I, then it was mentioned by Will that certain ones of these uses might not have to go for an S E P and there was some technicalities involved in that. I wanted to just request that each parcel go to S E P. I don't know how you, I don't know how you would do it, what you would need to do, but I think every parcel should have it. You really, really need to check the stormwater quality. Now, on each one of these parcels, especially when you're talking about parking large equipment, parking motor homes, parking anything of that ilk, and that, well, that's basically it. Several of these parcels will automatically go to Wetlands because they are within our upland review area, but many of them are not. And this is on a very, and it's within spitting distance practically of the Boy's River and Lake Zor. So everything that happens on that parcel is going to dump right into Lake Zor. So it's essential that you really monitor the stormwater quality and make sure that it's the highest we can keep it. And that's my comments for this evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Spence. And I believe we have agreed that all of the uses will go under S E P.
Then that's wonderful, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the application before the commission? Hearing none, then I'd like to, are there any other members of the commission that would like to comment before we go back to the applicant? Hearing none, then Mr. Kimball?
Oh, Mike, it's Nicole. I have a question, question or a loopo here. I wanted to, I believe, the discussion regarding the trucks on Old Zor from Mr. Bernaska. I grew up down there, so I understand the truck traffic from the old Stevenson Lumber. And I agree, left-turn-only signs coming out of the Old Zor driveway would be great, but I am a little concerned with trucks that choose to go down Old Zor, avoid the hill and making that sharp left turn to get in there. I'm wondering if that was part of Mr. Bernaska's concern on top of them thinking of right coming out of the driveway.
Mr. Kimball?
This is John Kimball. I'm confused. I know there's a sharp left turn. You'd already have to come down the hill in order to hit that sharp left turn, so.
Right, so would trucks instead use Old Zor? If you're coming from the center of Monroe, would they then enter Old Zor from up by East Village, putting more trucks on Old Zor, which is Mr. Bernaska's concern?
No, I mean, as I'm sure, again, John Kimball for the record, as I'm sure you're aware, most trucking is done by GPS. GPS doesn't take the truck drivers, professional truck drivers off of the main roads and give them a longer distance on secondary roads. So I do not anticipate that trucking will veer off of the state highway. The other thing is the state highway is much better maintained. The road is smoother, it's wider and the, in terms of storm response, the state is, has always done an excellent job in terms of maintaining that as a clear path. So I don't believe that that's going to be a problem from a practical standpoint. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ron Benofsky. May I speak?
Mr. Benofsky, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments to make at that junction of Old Zor Road and 111. As I said in a previous meeting, and I don't know whether you're combining the comments from that meeting with this one there, I commented on that, that particular junction. I happen to see a couple of accidents at that corner. Ugly, I'm not even going to tell you what I saw. But I can't imagine a truck coming out of that, out of Old Zor Road or if it had, if it was able to come out onto Old Zor Road through the old Trust Tech property and take, and with a large piece of equipment and be able to safely or fast enough get across that road before traffic was on it. I don't know how you would control the traffic on there. You're already on a hill. Traffic coming up that hill or going down that hill is probably, I would say, not 100% of the time, but a very large percent of the time, doing at least 50 miles an hour on roads that, a road that has an incline and a tremendous blind spot coming out of Old Zor Road, looking left to, at traffic coming up Old Zor Road. You don't even have a, you don't have a good line of sight now. I don't know what you would do to improve that, but it certainly is not ready for any development until somebody says, somebody with some brains says that that's a, the line of sight is very important, especially if you're dealing with large trucks and trucks coming down that hill. If the state misses, doesn't sand or salt it or whatever they do or pre-salt it, there's no way to make that thing safe. It's scary at times. And it's not, they would cancel schools, but that doesn't mean other things wouldn't be going up and down there. That is a problem traffic area and it's got to be looked at realistically. And I don't think that anybody's even thought of that. And this, this is, what I'm seeing here is a haphazard approach and looking, looking at all these pieces of property and developing them one at a time probably will limit your consideration of some very good larger uses because they'll be already developed and where you won't be able to do it, which is why I think you need a real professional land use evaluation for the long term for the Town of Monroe and not for the benefit of a lot of short, haphazard, hodgepodge, small commercial opportunities. That's not in the best interest of the Town of Monroe. How you do that, that's why you do a P O C D. Thank you.
Now, go ahead, say Bob.
This is Bob Bernaska. Okay, Bob Bernaska, 99 Bagburn again. I'd like to comment on Mr. Kimball's remarks on GPS and commercial truck use. I live at the corner of Bagburn and Old Zor. And going down Bagburn Hill into Jordan Hill in Newtown, there is an overpass there with an old railroad and it's limited in height. And there's a sign there. Several times a day, two or three times a day, a commercial truck that I'm sure is guided by the GPS that Mr. Kimball has mentioned will come down Bagburn Hill and try to get through and then realize that they can't. And I know they're there because they will reverse themselves and like many commercial trucks or maybe all of them, I can hear the beep, beep, beep in my house. So I do not agree with Mr. Kimball's remarks that the GPS will not route trucks onto, onto Old Zor and maybe even Bagburn Hill because my experience is just the opposite, that there's often commercial trucks that are guided, I suspect, by GPS down Bagburn Hill and they have to reverse themselves and they realize that they can't get through that overpass with the old railroad there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernaska.
Debbie Dragonetti, can I add a quick comment? Debbie Dragonetti, 156 Old Zor. I want to agree about that entrance on Old Zor to Stevenson Lumber because I have been here 35 years. We have had issues, we did have issues with Stevenson Lumber. Sometimes their trucks did go down Old Zor, probably to avoid that steep hill. And we would have to call and, you know, make sure they re-instructed the drivers. And I'm pretty sure there's been more development down there on Old Zor since Stevenson Lumber left. I think there's, right next to that driveway, that driveway on Old Zor, there's a house that's been built since Stevenson Lumber left. I'm not sure. But the point that Mr. Benofsky also made about the left turn only, first of all, I think a lot of trucks wouldn't pay attention to that and they would be also entering the other end of Old Zor to get to the Stevenson property. But anyway, it's not a big space there. If you were, if you're a tractor trailer driver and it says left turn only, like he said, like Mr. Benofsky said, you get to the end of Old Zor and you, I mean, the truck would, the truck would basically take all the space between the driveway to the Stevenson property and the end of Old Zor. That's about the length of it. And, and then they'd have to make that left turn onto the steep part of 111 going down to 34. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dragonetti. I'd like to take it back to Mr. Kimball for concluding remarks.
Hi, again, it's John Kimball for the record. And I appreciate all the comments. Many of these comments relate to the point in time when we'll actually be getting a special exception permit. And the public will have ample time and we obviously have to prove that we are not creating a traffic problem with the use of the property. As far as rushing this thing to the altar, we began this process November 13th, 2018. Submitted applications, withdrew applications, went to regulation subcommittee, reapplied, went through three or four different iterations of types of zoning districts. You know, I, I think we've come up with a very good application at this point. I think it meets the, in fact, I know it meets the Plan of Conservation Development for 2010. That's the current plan that we're operating on. The plan is obviously a fluid document. You know, it's important for us to get this approved. We actually had a meeting today with a, with a company onsite that wants to take one of the buildings in full. If I've got another tenant that is also interested in taking another building. If we can move this forward, a number of things that we're talking about, you know, we, you know, the lower parking lot may never need commercial parking because the tenants that we're looking at will need to utilize those for parking spaces for their own businesses. So, you know, it's, it's. you know, it's, it's, it's been a long time to get through this. I think we've done a good job in terms of taking away some uses that people were concerned with. I think what we're left with is a very good, solid regulation that the town of Monroe and the commission can use to move forward. And, you know, I would ask that you consider granting an approval on this application. Obviously modifying the application so that all of the uses become special exception permit uses so that each site is brought in front of the commission and given the same scrutiny through the process. I thank you very much for your time. And I think that's it. Do you have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. I can vouch for that. We have been, we have spent over two years working with Mr. Kimball on a plan for this property. The P O C D consultant that we have now for the P O C D rewrite has looked at this property as well. This is a business property, and the old P O C D, as will the new P O C D, recommend any new development to be conducted on property that's already business property. So if there aren't any other comments from the commissioners, we'd like to close this hearing and move on to the other part of this property, the zone change. All right, we'll close the hearing now and then go to public hearing number seven, which is ZCA 2020-03, file 1016D, which is the same property. Mr. Gresta, did you go over the new exhibits for this property, this public hearing already?
We did that earlier.
Then for the applicant, Mr. Kimball, do you have some remarks that pertain to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, we received comments from staff at 4 o'clock this afternoon, and given the timing, we feel that we need time to review those comments so that we can properly address them, and we feel that it would be unfair to the commission to waste their time this evening presenting on this application. So we'd ask that you adjourn it so we can put together a thoughtful response to staff's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. I agree with that. We'll adjourn the public hearing number seven until sometime in the future when you are able to respond to the comments.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number nine. This is SDP 2020-01, file number 139. This is 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. Most of us are familiar with this application. It is on the agenda to be reconvened from 12/17/20. Mr. Gresta, do you have any new exhibits?
Yes, I do. Before that, I'd like to acknowledge that Ron Schneider did join us earlier around the time that we started the text amendment public hearing that just concluded. So for the record, I just want to show that he is here. The exhibits for 64 Cambridge 4 Independence Drive application. Give me two seconds, please.
Yo, Mike, Commissioner Ambrose, will we be able to take a five-minute break?
Oh, you can take a break whenever you want.
No, I know, but I don't want to be out of the meeting, so I'm going to take a break for five minutes.
Okay, Leon.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we all take a break then because otherwise we'll lose continuity of the presence of the members.
I was going to make a motion.
All right.
All right, we'll have a motion for a five-minute recess. And I don't think we need a motion in a second, but let's take five-minute recess. It's now 8:34 or 8:38. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, everyone. This is Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is 8:44. We're going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission for January the 7th, 2021. So we're about to reconvene SDP 2020-01, file number 139. And I believe Mr. Gresta was about to read any new exhibits.
Yes. Exhibit 30, applicant's response comments. Exhibit 31, project narrative updated. Exhibit 32, truck turning signal. Exhibit 33, Wighton's rental pool assessment revised. Exhibit 34, exhibit mass EXO1 and EXSCX. Exhibit 35, revised engineering report. Exhibit 36, revised site plans. The next series of exhibits from 37 through 43 are from the environmental intervenor. Exhibit 37, Alta Environmental Review. Exhibit 38, George Logan Resume. Exhibit 39, Alta 40, aerial photographs. Exhibit 41, amended notice of intervention. Exhibit 42, IWC Notice of Violation Meeting Request. Exhibit 43, IWC Violation Background Report. Exhibit 44, comments from the Conservation Commission of Monroe. Exhibit 45, public comment letter from Margaret Minor. Exhibit 46, updated A R T Ten Engineer Comment.
Thank you, Mr. Gresta. Just for the record, we do not have an inland wetlands report, so this hearing will need to remain open tonight. For the applicant, I believe we have Mr. Soli.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Office is located here at 501 Main Tree in Monroe. With me here this evening is our team. Representatives from the applicant's team, our land use counsel, our environmental attorney, and representatives from WSP, both Derek Jones, our L E P, and Ken Taylor, our hydrogeologist here. My hope for tonight was to provide a little bit of an introduction, tell you what we're going to be talking about tonight, hand it over to Jane Warren to talk a little bit about just kind of the environmental regulatory environment and the E P's oversight role and her discussions with them. Then allow Derek Jones to present a little bit more of the findings regarding his analysis, talk through that a little bit, address some of the comments raised at the last hearing regarding silica and the stonedust pile and those environmental concerns. And then kind of walk through, you know, some of the revised information that we had submitted and address some of the other comments and questions raised at the last hearing. So that was our, that's what I would hope to accomplish this evening, and then obviously answer any commission questions as they come up through the process. But to start, I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Jane Warren, who is an environmental attorney with McCarter and English. Just to kind of give a broad overview for the commission, just so there's a good understanding regarding D E P's role, P and Z's role. And then we'll give it to Derek to talk specifically about the environmental condition of the site.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Jane Warren, environmental attorney with McCarter and English in Hartford, Connecticut. I have practiced in the environmental field for 35 years and am the former chair of the Connecticut Environmental Bar Association. I just want to take a few minutes, a very brief overview of some of the issues that I have frankly with respect to the Alta letter dated December 29, submitted to you by Evan Glass with Alta. Evan, I just would like to remind, the commission is a licensed environmental professional and hydrogeologist and a qualified L E P that can opine on things like soil and groundwater conditions. He is not an attorney, but his letter has a lot of issues thrown at you, I think, to distract you from some of the real issues and hoping that something will stick. He throws up a lot of shoulds and coulds and mights and things that might happen and might have occurred that frankly wouldn't hold up in court, but his, his, his basic premise of some of the legal issues is unfounded. And I'll just go through two or three of them for you, some of the main points that he raises. The primary one being that this, this application should be brought to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Certainly, your, your other applications in town haven't been required to do so. D E P has not required that this be done. This is an application for the disposal of clean fill, which is not regulated by D E P, which does not require a D E P permit. D E P is aware of the proceedings here. They have inspected the site. They have been provided with the revised material intake protocol, which was revised after some concerns raised by the intervenor. They have said to me that the property is, has no issues and they don't need to see an application because this is not a permitted activity with them. So I don't want the commission to be concerned that this is something that hasn't been provided to the state, but the state has, as Evan concedes in his memo to you, while they would like to change their regulations because they think that perhaps clean fill should be more regulated. They haven't, and there is no permit required from the state and no application, pre-application meeting needs to be held. That's held when you require several permits from the agency and they bring in people from air and water and waste and say, how do we coordinate? What's the timing? Who goes first? That's just not relevant here. So Evan raises a couple of other points about why D E P must be notified. For example, he says that prior to relocation of a water course, D E P must be notified when the, when the application is in a flood hazard area. This is not in a flood hazard area, and there is no relocation of a water course being considered. So again, this application does not need to be brought to D E P. Although, as I said, they have, they have been made aware of the activities at the site and have no concerns. And then I just want to point out one other thing. I think that there's a, there's an effort to scare the commission, I think, in terms of the publicity that's gone on in Fairfield with respect to what was referred to in the letter as the Julian dumping problem in Fairfield that the Julians had. There's been a number of arrests for illegal dumping on a town property. This property is owned by the applicant before you. He is not going to be taking in material that is going to contaminate his own property. That, those, the similarities, there aren't similarities, but the attempt to bring in something like that is just wholly inappropriate and irrelevant to this application. So I would like to turn over to Derek Jones at WSP. We have had an L E P look at the site. We've had an L E P contest the soil and the groundwater. It has been determined to be compliant with standards. The town's independently hired licensed environmental professional with Arcatus reviewed WSP's work and found it to be sufficient. And so Derek Jones is going to just walk you through what he found and what work he did to assure the commission that this property has not in the past received improper materials. And as Kevin said, he'll walk you through a little bit more detail to assure the commission that there will not be acceptance of improper materials going forward. So Derek, if you want to take it from here?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Jane. My name's Derek Jones of WSP in Shelton, Connecticut. I'm a licensed environmental professional with the state of Connecticut. So yes, we did a, I just want to briefly go over our subsurface investigation that I think has been provided to the commission. So we did in a couple of iterations of investigation, we sampled the various materials that have been placed at the site as well as some of the native materials that have been stockpiled. So the, we've collected six hand tool sampling points, you know, from the shallow materials. We did 10 soil borings through the imported materials depths of eight to 43 feet below grade. We basically brought them all to refusal, equipment refusal. There were nine test pit excavations, and we analyzed a total of 31 soil samples, two groundwater samples from pre-existing wells that are at the site, and collected a surface water sample from the onsite pond area. And our report basically concludes that we don't think the materials there are a source of contamination for the groundwater or surface water at the site. Presented this to the inland wetland commission. And the inland wetland commission had hired its own consultant, Restoranz, who's also an L E P. And his testimony from December 9th was basically that he agreed with the conclusions of our report that there was no contamination found. And that's, anyone's wants to go back to the meeting, it's at time mark 2:10:38, December 9th, IWC meeting. Then I just wanted to move on to some of the other issues that were raised at the last meeting. I know there were some questions about silica from Commissioner Ambrosi. I had reviewed that part of the, of the video, and I just wanted to touch on that real quickly. So silica, it's the second most abundant element in the earth's crust, about 28% of the earth's crust. So it's in pretty much all rocks at various concentrations, later to darker, you know, increases or decreases. But, you know, 45, 75, 85% of rock is silica. So silica naturally enters the water table, dissolves in in groundwater, interaction with rock. It's been, studies have found it at concentrations generally ranging from 1 to 30 milligrams per liter and at an average of about 17 milligrams per liter because it's so abundant in the earth. It's always present in the groundwater. The FDA recommends that we consume 10 to 30 grams of silica per day. It's, people use it as a supplement for bone health, heart disease, Alzheimer's, digestive reasons, and hair loss. So there's no, the EPA has no data on, you know, as far as what a safe, you know, unsafe concentration of silica ingestion would be. They deal, what they do- They deal what they do have is a standard for breathing silica dust. Silica dust is known to cause health prob various health problems, and it impacts the construction industry, much like black lung disease impacts, you know, coal miners. Silicosis of the lungs impacts construction workers that work at, you know, where they drill in the ground a lot day to day or or drilling concrete or various various activities like that. So there's a the OSHA has established a permissible permissible exposure limit for silica. And and, you know, basically, if you're conducting dust suppression activities while you're while you're, you know, doing construction work, or, you know, you're wet cutting, if you're cutting concrete, those are supposed to protect you from silica. But basically, it's 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 silica dust is a long-term exposure problem for construction workers. And that's where and it is regulated by OSHA. But otherwise, there are any hazards that I'm aware of for ingesting silica or or silica being dissolved in groundwater. So then I wanted to move on to the the December 29th Alta report.
Hey, Derek, excuse me, Derek, just before you you touch out leave the silica discussion, I I think I'd want to maybe open up to the commission, since there was a lot of discussion on this before, to maybe kind of talk through that, hopefully try to address any additional concerns or or things that may be outstanding or you guys may see that hasn't been addressed.
Are there any members of the commission that would like to speak to Mr. Jones? Go ahead, Leon.
Hi, Derek Jones. I looked at the same thing you did on silica, right? And from what I understand, that there is studies being performed on stone dust for silica that they haven't come up with. They're concerned about it, but that there is studies out there right now that with high volumes of stone dust with silica, because it's it's now fine, that they worry about it in groundwater. I mean, did you see that when you looked this up?
So what I found was that it naturally dissolves in groundwater. So in the warmer the groundwater, the more dissolution. So there's if you have, you know, for example, if you have a deep groundwater well in bedrock, you're going to have more dissolved silica than you would at the at the at the surface of, you know, the shallow groundwater. But but basically, the studies I've seen show it is always present in in groundwater because it's it's abundant in the earth's crust.
Well, it's abundant in the rock itself, they it is, but they were saying that as far as when it's a fine material, as far as stone dust, it's a high concentrator of silica. And so they're doing studies on that right now, so I don't want to, like, misform the commission that there there is being studies done on it because they don't know the environment, you know, the health effects of it right now because of stone dust as a real fine material, it travels through groundwater more than it travels through regular rock. And so I did a couple of studies on that. The other thing I have to ask you is, did you look into anything about the iron in that material, in the stone dust? Would that affect the drinking water supply? Or because don't forget, all these properties around here are well, right?
Actually, actually, I just like to point out that there actually is public water service available to all the surrounding properties. So the properties in this proximity are not unwell. Aquarian has a public water main that runs through Pepper Street. It's actually being lowered as part of the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project, and all of the surrounding businesses in Pepper Street Business Park are all connected to public water. So there is no public water supply from a well standpoint in the proximity of the area of proposed activity at 64 Cambridge and Ford Dependence Drive.
But we don't know where that groundwater goes, do we, Kevin? We have no.
We certainly do. Well, ground groundwater is connected. Groundwater is everywhere.
I understand that, so it travels. And like I'm asking you, I just asked him a simple question. Do I have to be concerned about the amount of iron that's in that stone dust getting into the groundwater and contaminating, well, increasing the iron in somebody's well water? And I guess he would have to be the one to answer that question, right?
So I'm I'm not aware of any, you know, this isn't the first quarry that's been in the vicinity of wells and and, you know, I'm not aware of any occurrence of of iron problems or silica problems in groundwater.
Derek, did you test for Derek, did you test for iron and other metals in the analytical testing you did on the site?
We test for for various metals that are, you know, have 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 regulatory criteria because they're they can be toxic, but we haven't tested for for iron or silica, which are, you know, obviously highly abundant in the in the in in rock and sand and soil.
And at this point, this is Jane Warren, for the record, they're not regulated by DEP, and so there are no cleanup criteria for them or remediation criteria for them. And to the extent that DEP decides to regulate that, this property and every other property in the state is going to have to test to be make sure they're compliant.
No, and I and I understand that. I just don't want the people in in our town to have problems with the well because most of the town is on well water, not everybody is on city water. And so I have very, very concerns. And I think that maybe that I don't know why we haven't reached out to deep ourselves in the town, but I think that we should have somebody from deep come in here and so we can discuss what we should be putting in a in a GAA site in in a groundwater site. And I don't know why the town hasn't reached out, and I don't know why, you know, the mission has requested. I mean, I know that we don't have time to hire a professional because of the application time, but I think that we need to get some answers on what we can put in a GAA site. And that is definitely a groundwater site. You have hit groundwater, and I just want to put this there, this application here is for a violation. It's basically we're working with you to try to solve a violation. And so I have concerns about what we put in a hole that's in the groundwater. And I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I think that we need to have some kind of answers from somebody more than than, you know, you know, like, you're saying to me, well, it's not regulated now, but what happens down the years, that down five years down the road, when this project is going on, all of a sudden regulated, now what are we going to stop the project and restart over again? No, that's not it, because we already gave you the approval for a project.
This is Jane Warren, just like every other project that's been approved, to the extent that the state changes the groundwater standards or adopts criteria for contaminants that weren't in effect before, they would have to comply. And I will remind the commission that the Wetlands Commission did hire its own independent licensed environmental professional who contacted DEP and went through this project with the DEP, and the water company has also been involved. And and the hydrogeologist, the Arcadis hydrogeologist LEP, said that there is that there is no issue with groundwater from the site moving off off of the site, that and the wells on the down gradient side have been tested and they comply with standards.
I'd also I'd also like to add to that, too, that that the GAA. Let me just, real quick, real quick, it's really important, it's really important.
This is the applicant's time.
I'm going to turn to the applicant as well, Mr. O'Reilly. I just wanted to cite to the the Arcadis report, which is now an exhibit. This is the report of the independent hydrogeologist and LEP retained by the Inland Wetlands Commission. I understand this report is now in evidence in this in this proceeding. It's dated November 17, 2020, and on the top of page two, and I think this should hopefully give everybody a lot of peace of mind, what the independent hydrogeologist says is, the filling of the quarry will have a negligible impact on the watershed because water is not being diverted to another watershed. In addition, the impacted area is very small when compared to the entire watershed. So I I think this is really a de minimis kind of situation based on the opinions of the independent hydrogeologist that was retained by the town. And that's the only thing I wanted to say. Thank you, Chairman O'Reilly.
Thanks, Steve. And just the one other comment, though, to Commissioner Ambrosi's concern. Commissioner Ambrosi, you're absolutely right, this isn't a GAA location, and the DEP does have criteria on what you have to do and what you have to test for within that designation from a groundwater standpoint. And the analysis that's been conducted has been done based on the RSRs for a GAA location. So so the DEP does have guidance in terms of what you need to test for, how that needs to be evaluated, and that was followed as part of the testing and the analysis for this site.
And I believe that he said in the meeting and in the Wetlands meeting that that this should be like natural material. He didn't mention anything about stone dust because stone dust is is not now a natural material because you basically crush that, that is a material that you made. And I thought that basically he came out and said that it should be like, you know, rock, earth, and this and that. And I believe that's what he commented on, Mr. Soli, am I not right or not?
Well, there's, you know, I guess, I guess.
That's why I really.
Part of the concern or part of the question is, you know, we're, I guess, maybe I'm trying to better understand the primary concerns coming from the commission regarding the stone dust and using it as fill.
Because I I I I believe that you're going to put a lot of stone dust in there, and it's going to be high concentrations of silica, it's going to be high concentrations of of iron that are fine particles, they're not part of the rock anymore, they're fine particles, and not like what's seeping through the lock, rock, little by little by little. You're putting high volumes of that in there, and I have concerns about that. And if I I really do have a lot of concerns about that because once you put it in there and and we start having problems, then I don't know, you know, and I like to hear other opinions on this because I'm getting, you know, you know, Derek Jones' opinion, but I don't have any other opinions. I see somebody raising his hand now that would like to talk about it. And so I I have very concerns about that. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but, you know, we have to protect Monroe. And, you know, like, and everybody says, well, you know, you bring up about what happened in Fairfield and bring people bring up about what happened in Fairfield. Well, that could happen here, it could happen anywhere. And the thing is, is that don't forget, this is not like something that is not going to bleed into the water. I don't I believe it is. I mean, it is in groundwater. And so, I mean, it's not like a regular site that where you're coming for a site plan and you want to put a building in, and we're here to address a violation. And this hole should have never got that deep. You should have never been in the groundwater in the first place.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Ambrosi. I'd like to see if there are any other members of the commission that would like to comment on this or have questions from the experts that we've heard from.
Hi, this is Dominic Penechia. I really have I really have the same concern regarding silica and why can we look to a more natural material to introduce in that area? Why are we only limited to the stone dust?
We are, and we're not proposing to only place stone dust in that area either. We were saying we wanted to use natural material, but, you know, I think I think our biggest our biggest trying to, we understand the commission's concern regarding the use of that material, but what we tried to do is, we're trying to 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 address those concerns and to provide evidence from experts that says, you know, based on all the information that's available, we don't believe that that creates or presents any harm to the environment or any of the surrounding areas. And and DEP, if they felt that silica content or iron content was something that was potentially problematic or harmful, they would have RSR criteria for that specific thing. There are a lot of sites in town, in the town of Monroe, that have environmental contamination that does pose a risk to groundwater. That is true. And this commission has never, you know, this commission, I don't think it's their standard practice to ask for environmental integrity of a property or weigh into how that property needs to be remediated or cleaned because that's a DEP obligation, that's the role that DEP plays in making sure that any environmentally contaminated site cleans up that site or does whatever has to happen in order to protect the, you know, surrounding properties from a groundwater standpoint. The DEP does not recognize silica content as a environmental threat or harm that requires remediation or have an RSR standard for it. If they did, if they created one, we would have to comply with that, just as everything else. So we wanted, the main purpose of this discussion is I wanted to try to assuage the commission's concerns that this really is an environmental harm, and we don't believe that it is because DEP doesn't believe that it is.
With all due respect to you, it's a harm to fish, to their gills, it's a harm to drink it in water. I have well water. My only concern is, and my recommendation is, at this point, why can we substitute something that we don't know what's going to happen with all this large amount of stone dust going in there? Why can't we substitute a more friendly material?
Kevin, can I just speak for one second, please, before you answer that? Dominic, the reason why stone dust is coming up is because when we walked the property, there were mounds and mounds and mounds, probably 70 feet high of stone dust. And that's why we're bringing up stone dust right now because they're going to need a place to put that. And and there's also excavation going on at a different site, which I'm sure, but I'm not positive, has stone dust on it also that will probably end up at that property as well. So we bring up stone dust because we're concerned because of the amount that was there when we did the walkthrough. That's why we keep bringing up the stone dust.
And and I and I understand that, and I also like to point out that 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 material, that stone dust file, is a is used for environmental remediation. That is a standard material that's used if, you know, for example, you know, when GE was cleaning up some of their environmental impacted sites in lower Fairfield County, that stone dust material is used to replace the contaminated and polluted soils. It is it is identified as something that's that's that is that's exactly, that's a perfect purpose for it, is to filling a hole of an environmentally of environmental soils that have been removed from a property.
Was that placed in groundwater?
I'm sure it's been placed in, and I'm sure I'm sure there's been stone dust.
Specific property you're talking about, was it placed in groundwater?
I I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Condon, so what I understand is silica is dangerous to inhale. The FDA says it's okay to ingest. If you're going to be inhaling your well water, the water is going to cause more damage than the silica. That's the situation we're at right now. I don't think the silica, and yes, there might be studies looking into the long-term effects, but right now, the FDA says it is okay to ingest silica, and deep considers it clean fill. So that that's where I'm I'm going to agree with those specialists right now in that direction.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Not necessarily a question, a comment. Robert Westland, I'm comfortable at this point with trusting the current DEP regulation standards put forth at this point.
The applicant like to continue?
We would, yes. Yeah, I'd like Derek to touch on some of the other comments that he was going to move into now that I think he talked through the silica.
Chairman, I have a comment on the iron, if you would.
Who are you?
I am Evan Glass, licensed environmental professional, hydrogeologist, the person that they spoke of with respect to my letter dated December 29th, and I am representing the intervenor. And I have some information on the iron standards.
Well, if you make it brief, I'm not letting, going to let this turn into a circus again here. This is the applicant's time. If you have a brief comment, go ahead.
This is brief and to the point of of the standards. It's true that there are are no DP standards for groundwater protection for iron, but there is a But there is a DP standard for surface water protection for iron. I believe it's in, as an additional including substance. I believe Nicole had asked me at the last meeting what, where to find the standards. And I said the RSRs, and I'm sorry, that was an incomplete answer. It's in the RSRs and the additional including substances documents, which are extra standards that the DEP likes to enforce. With respect to drinking water and iron, it's, it's true that DEP doesn't have groundwater protection criteria and those are designed to be protective of drinking water. But it's also true and overlooked here so far that the Department of Public Health actually has standards and the EPA has standards for drinking water, in particular for drinking water in, in well water and surface water supplies. But, but the secondary maximum contaminant level for drinking water that the EPA has is 0.3 milligrams per liter. And that is the same number that the Connecticut Department of Health uses as an action level. Secondary an action level means it's not a toxic substance, but it is, it is, it has undesirable qualities with respect to staining and odor. So it has caused problems with water supplies. I don't want to be overly dramatic about it, but I did want to just add all the, make the answer complete, that there are actually standards for iron for surface water protection criteria from the DEP and with respect to well water at the EPA and State Department of Health level.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, for that clarification.
Commissioner O'Reilly.
We're going to go back to the applicant now. Mr. Carr?
Yes, as we've just heard from Evan Glass. Have we seen any testing that we or anybody else has done about iron? Or is this just another thing that we're supposed to be concerned about? Because I've heard you speak about it, but none of the testing I've seen from the site that we manage has had any iron. Can you?
Mr. Jones, do you have any information on that?
So we haven't tested, I haven't done any testing for iron. One thing I would like to correct Mr. Glass on is that the DEP does not regulate naturally occurring substances that are not the result of a release. The, these materials, despite being ground up and dust, do qualify as natural material, natural soil under the standard regulations.
That's arguable. If you're causing a problem, then you're causing a problem. Our standard is.
I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Glass.
Mr. Glass, can we, this is the applicant's time. Now, Mr. Carr, if you're going to be asking questions of the intervener, then we're going to have to let the intervener answer your questions. Now, do you want to continue with your presentation?
This is Derek Jones.
Yeah.
I think that was a question to Mr. Carr.
Thanks, Derek.
And the answer is yes. Please, Derek or Kevin?
Derek, you can go ahead and finish the other points that you were going to make and then we can move on from there. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so this is Derek Jones from WSB. The, yeah, as I was saying, the, the rock dust qualifies as natural soil. And the DEP does not regulate materials that are in the groundwater that are not the result of a release. So moving on to the December 29th letter from Alta. The, there seems to be a lot of confusion in the letter about clean fill and the significance of it being identified and defined in the solid waste regulations. So clean fill is in the solid waste regulations, but it, contrary to what the Alta letter says, clean fill is not solid waste. Clean fill is defined as what, what isn't, what solid waste isn't. As you can see on page seven of the Alta letter, clean fill definition includes natural soil. So the DEP definition of clean fill from the solid waste regulations includes natural soil. So the DEP is saying, if you dig up a bunch of soil, put it in a pile, and you don't want that pile, they're not regulating it as a solid waste. They're saying you can put it at another site. You can do whatever you want with it. Somebody else can take it and use it to fill a hole. So it's a complete misunderstanding of the significance of clean fill being defined by the DEP and to being defined in the solid waste regulations. The, so the same with natural soil. You have brick and concrete and ceramics. They're carved out. They're not being regulated as solid waste. You have a pile of this stuff. You can manage it as solid waste, send it to a bulky waste landfill, or you can use it as clean fill. If you use it as clean fill, it's not regulated. If you use it, send it to a landfill, it is regulated. If you send it to the Manchester landfill, they're, they're going to charge you as bulky waste, not as clean fill. The next point I wanted to bring up was, right, clean, the Alta letter discusses, this points out that there's some significance about the clean fill that contains some of these other compounds like brick and, and concrete. Being below the water table is a, is a problem. And that, you know, are we going to remove clean fill that's been placed below the water table? And I don't, there's no regulation or statute that requires this. It was just, it was, moving forward, the applicants agreed as a best management practice not to do that, not to put non-natural materials below the water table. At least that's my understanding. So I think that's another sort of immaterial issue about where the water table is or where it's going to be. You know, we, we, there was a hydrologist that the applicant hired who estimates where the water table is going to be. That's our, you know, nobody knows exactly where it's going to be, but we've done our best to figure it out. And we're going to, you know, use that as the, as to guide the work. The next thing I wanted to bring up was, the, right, the Alta letter claims we've brought polluted soil there. And they reference a, the lead detections, the background levels of lead, according to Alta, are 15, 15 milligrams per kilogram. There's no reference or anything, but they've taken issue with, with, with my reference to a different, different level of being background. And they, there are lots of references. 15 milligrams per kilogram is not any sort of state agreed on number. The state of Massachusetts has done a very extensive study on what background is. And thousands of samples in 2002, they compiled and, to a nice document that's available on the web, says it's 100. So 15 or 100, you know, it's a matter of opinion. Alta talks about how, you know, because we brought polluted soil, we needed DEP permission prior. Again, that's not, according to the reading, my reading of the regulations, there's, there are regulations to talk about that. But in the applicability section, they don't apply to, to, you know, we're not regulated under these sets of regulations. They, we're not a transfer act, hazardous waste transfer act site or a, under DEP order or in the voluntary mediation program. We disagree that it's polluted soil, but, you know, it's, to say that, you know, we needed DEP approval is, is wrong. The, the next point, oh, acceptance criteria. Alta has indicated that believe we should have an acceptance criteria, meaning contaminant levels that were detected that we wouldn't be brought in. Soil wouldn't be brought in. But the, the material acceptance protocol says you can't be impacted by a release. These materials you're bringing in can't be impacted by a release. You can't have petroleum, you can't have hazardous materials, other hazardous wastes, anything like that. So basically, if somebody tests some soil and detects these constituents, you can't bring the material there. The, there, there are some constituents that are in construction materials that are, that are acceptable. You know, for example, asphalt is made with heavy end petroleum products that are, they use it because they're essentially insoluble. And it's a binder for the asphalt materials. So those get into lots of different types of demo debris, lots of different types of soils when you're digging in a site. So, but that's not impacted by a release. If it qualifies as clean fill, then it's acceptable. And, and, and part of the definition of clean fill is that it's virtually inert. So by definition, we can't be impacting the groundwater. So it's, you know, there's all this hand wringing about, about groundwater. But, but if, if we are obeying the regulations and the laws, we can't bring in stuff that isn't virtually inert. And basically, the investigation that we've done, you know, demonstrates that this stuff qualifies as virtually inert. We're not impacting. The, oh, yeah, then Alta discusses, you know, how, what's been going on is, is really contrary to these DEP proposed regulations. That's, they, they proposed these regulations 12 years ago, and they've never gotten them passed. It's not as though this is something that's on the cusp of happening. This is, the, as I understand it, the regulated community isn't too pleased with them and, and they haven't moved forward. So I think it's, it's quite silly to, to, to govern your actions by regulations that are proposed 12 years ago that haven't moved forward. I guess that's about all the points I wanted to cover.
Thanks, Derek. And then just for the commission too. So Derek's here, he's our LEP. He's here to answer any other questions that the commission may have. But also Ken Taylor, our hydrogeologist, is also here. We submitted his report for the record. His report was also reviewed as part of the, in the wetlands permitting process and the report from the town's third-party reviewer for that project, Russ Drenzo from Arcadis, also, and his report included references to that and he agreed with the findings or didn't find any issues with the findings from Mr. Taylor from a hydrogeology standpoint. So, so we wanted to make sure our entire team was here. We wanted to make sure we were able to answer any questions the commission have. We're trying to address all of your concerns so you can come back and have a comfort level for what we're proposing. Because, because I want to bring back, so I'm going to run through kind of some of the major points in response to Will's comments. As I think one of the commissioners joked before, you guys did get a box of material at your house, which probably required two people to carry it in. But we did provide a formal response to Will's comments. But I want to just take it, take a step back from a very high level. In 2006, an application was approved on this property. For 13 years, activities proceeded and the commission and the town staff was aware that the activities were getting beyond the scope of what was approved. And no action was ever taken. The property, the property was then sold. So all of the activity that resulted in where we are right now were the acts of the former property owner. A new owner acquired the property in 2019. And the first thing that they did after they acquired the property was come to the town and to talk about the project, to talk about the site, to talk about how to get this site back to a better place. There were concerns about the history of the activity on the site. The applicant tested to make sure that there was no environmental impact on the property. There was concerns about how to get the property to be restored, to be productive again. The applicant prepared an application submitted to Wetlands and Planning and Zoning to do exactly that, to restore the site, to figure out how to address the indirect impacts that happen from a wetland standpoint and how to address the fact that there's a, there's a big scar on the earth right now that no one in this town should be proud of. The applicant did that. They engaged a number of consultants. They brought everybody forward. They put our best foot forward to how to try to address this prod, address this property and to bring it back to be a productive, you know, productive property in the community. And that's why we're here. We are being responsive to the town, the Wetlands Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, trying to fix a problem. Concerns about the environmental integrity, we tested, we provided reports, we've demonstrated that there is no impact. And now the next thing is obviously the activity that we're proposing, which is before the commission, is we wanted to make sure those, what we're proposing is the right way to do it. So I wanted to kind of touch on all of the things we've built into this application to do exactly that, to address those concerns. So this commission can feel comfortable that this project can move forward and actually be done in a way that is going to protect the environment, protect the integrity of the commission and the community and not result in any other problems. Because again, the property owner that, that bought this property, that is now dealing with this issue, is dealing with it because he owns the property. He wants to get this property to be productive again. He doesn't want to live with a hole. And he doesn't want to fill that hole with hazardous material because that doesn't do anybody any good. It doesn't do him any good, it doesn't do town any good, doesn't do the groundwater any good. So we've tried to do everything we can to get this back on the right path. So I wanted to kind of run through some major points that came through Will's comments and also a lot of the other discussion that we've had and some, some other components that we've, that we've talked through. And, you know, there were some questions and, and comments about the, the lot line revision plan and the conservation easement that we're proposing. And I think Will proposed that, or was looking for some additional analysis regarding that, the conservation easement and all this other information. Those two components came out of the discussions with the Wetlands Commission. The Wetlands Commission wanted us to make sure that the proposed remedial efforts to restore the watershed to the wetlands was contained on one property. So we're proposing to modify the property line so that all of the contributing watershed to that wetland system is on 4 Independence Drive and 64 Cambridge can be a separate property. That's part of our revisions to our plan set in response to the Wetlands Commission's discussion. With that is also the question about the conservation easement and that the Planning and Zoning Commission should take all this, should, should go through another analysis and an assessment on whether or not it's reasonable to put a conservation easement in place. The Wetlands Commission requested a conservation easement. We prepared that figure and the applicant is offering a conservation easement in response to the Wetlands Commission's request. So the Wetlands Commission's, through their analysis, is the agency that determined that a conservation easement was appropriate. They're within their rights from the state statutes and the Wetlands regulations to request conservation easements on properties. And that's why we're moving forward and proposing a conservation easement on this property as part of its application because we're trying to be responsive to the Wetlands Commission. And the Wetlands Commission did their analysis to understand whether or not they thought it was appropriate. They asked for it, we're giving it to them. We're trying to do everything we can to make this property restored so it can be utilized in the future. There's been a lot of discussion about the permit process and the, the application that we've submitted and proposed this activity. As we talked about at the last hearing, I want to run through it one more time. The town of Monroe has regulations which include both site plan applications, special exception permit applications, and then excavation and filling permit applications. The regulations restrict that fill permit applications can only be granted for two years and extended for another two years. But it allows for site plan applications to be granted for a longer duration. And state statutes, which is also referenced in the regulations, empowers commissions to actually approve a project for up to 10 years. No more than 10 years, but up to 10 years. We, in order to restore this site, we're required to import, import a considerable amount of material. It takes a long time to import that much material. And we, especially when we're trying to limit. And we've, especially when we're trying to limit and restrict the type of material that can come on the property, so that we can maintain the environmental integrity of the property. So there, so through pre-application meetings with staff, through discussions with the 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 town attorney and larger meetings with staff. You know, the application for a site plan approval allows us to propose a propose an application that includes the construction of a building and site work associated with it. And that permit itself can be granted for a 10-year duration. We know this is going to take a long time to bring in this material. If we came in for a fill permit application, this commission could only grant us so many years to do that work. And it is impossible, physically and fiscally impossible, to place and import that much material in the timeframe allotted through that permit process. This commission, and I think a commissioner mentioned it before, receive, or maybe not this commission, but past commissions, has received applications. And then something else took place. This property is a great example of that. An application was made in 2006, and something happened very differently for 13 years, without any real action or activity from 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 any of the the commissioner's staff. We didn't want, and we don't want, to propose an application that can't be met in what we're proposing. We can't propose to you that we're going to import 980,000 yards of material and get it done in two years because it's physically impossible to do that. The only way we can come before you and propose an application that can actually be completed in the timeline required is if we chose the path of a site plan application, which this commission has the ability to grant for longer periods. And the regulations support that. The if the commission doesn't like that, the commission can certainly change the regulations. But the regulations, as they're written, allow for an applicant to take this path. And there was discussion about, you know, come in for other permits and 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 split them into separate permits and to do this multiple times. This commission is very busy. You have a very busy agenda, and your staff is overworked and underappreciated. And the the concept for us to file multiple applications for one property, so this commission has to do this multiple times. It doesn't seem fair to anybody involved. It creates more work for everybody. Plus, we have a a neighbor who is very concerned, who has invested quite a bit of money to, in my opinion, delay this application. They have provided a number of recommendations, which we've incorporated into our plans, which I think makes our overall project better. But I couldn't imagine filing two, three, four applications, every one of them getting an intervention petition filed against it. And creating all that additional work and cost and expense, when the ultimate goal for this property is we've got a scar on the earth, we need to fix that. What's the fastest and most expeditious way we can do it? We chose a permit process which which the regulations enable and allow us to pursue. That is why we made the application for a site plan application. And that's why the documentation is as extensive and exhaustive as it is, because we need to make sure that what we proposed was something that could be done. And that would incorporate all those practices and measures that the commission needs to make sure are incorporated to not have an adverse impact on the environment or the community. So that's why we chose the path that we took. There was questions regarding, or there was a comment made at one of the last hearings about a a section of the excavation permit regulations, which talks about that an application for an excavation permit or fill permit to planning and zoning can't be filed until an approval is granted by the Wetlands Commission. We do not believe that applies here. We don't believe that this commissioner of the town of Monroe has ever required that an approval from Wetlands be received before an application is made to planning and zoning. And in section seven of the zoning regulations that deal with site plan applications, it does clearly state. And is consistent with state statutes that an application to wetlands simply has to be made prior to an application with planning and zoning. And that a wetland's approval has to be provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission before they can act on on an application. So we believe that based on the regulations, based on state statutes, all of the procedures have been filed in accordance with with the Monroe regulations and state statutes through the processing of this application. You know, regarding that permit process, the Wetlands Commission is currently in deliberations. We're very hopeful that we'll get a positive approval from them. And we know the commission needs that before they can close the hearing. The Health Department, there were some comments and questions about the Health Department and the review of the septic system. They actually issued an approval for that septic system, which should be in the record, but we'll follow up and submit that to the commission if it wasn't provided through the normal staff process. But they have, they have reviewed that septic system and have approved it. There was a lot of question and and concern about the material intake, material acceptance procedure. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk through that process. And one of the things I think that makes this application unique is that this applicant took, had the wherewithal, and we worked with them to create this document, a material acceptance procedure. There have been many applications in town, in the town of Monroe, where imported material was required and necessary. There's no application that I'm aware of where there's ever been any scrutiny or or thought on how that material had to get imported, how it needed to be managed. And most applications don't consider that. Even considerable applications that require 50, 60, 70,000 yards of import. What we included in our document and our material to make sure that this commission would be protected and the owner would be protected is we established a material acceptance procedure, which is followed for every load of material that comes to the site. And it's a several-step process that I want to run through with the commission. First, rockhead personnel is trained in how to how to go through this procedure. And the first thing they do is it starts with an initial screening of material. Which is done at multiple levels. So if someone wants to bring a load of material to the site, they start by going through the scale house. In the scale house review, they're they're they ask the person bringing in to identify what company that they're working for and to provide a certificate of conformance. And as part of our application process, we've provided the commission a stack of certificates of conformity, which come along with every load of material. What we provided the commission was simply a sampling of that for the different companies that have come to the site over the past eight to eight to 12 months at this point. But the applicant has 12,000 sheets of paper, which is essentially every load of material has one of these certificates of conformity. Now, what this says is that this says the material that's been brought to the site meets the definition of clean fill in accordance with DEP requirements. It does not contain any hazardous materials, petroleum, waste oil, things like that. And it also says that that the material has been in accordance with the material acceptance procedure. Now. So so that's an important component that every load of material has to go through this process. So they come up to the scale house, they say, this is, I'm such and such, this is who I am, this is where we're from. Here's our certificate of conformance that the material in in this load is clean. The scale house then does, they review the, they review the certificate, they make sure that it's clean. Then they do a visual inspection of the material, and then they say, okay, this seems to work out, you can go dump the material. After the material is dumped, the field operator does an additional review and verification. And then they go through and they say, does this meet the definition? Does this demonstrate to be clean fill? If it does, there they do a, there's soil screening. And that any material of of soil has to be tested. And that testing has to be submitted at least five days in advance of that truck actually showing up to the property. And so that's soil sampling, which is done by the person who brings the material. And then the operator, the the field operator also uses a PID meter, which is a calibrated meter, which basically detects for it detects for screen incoming materials for any volatile organic. So it picks up any potential for for any kind of odor from any kind of volatile organic compound. It's screened with a with a PID meter to ensure that there is no volatile organics within the materials. If it's detected, it's immediately removed from the site by the person who brought it. If it's not, it's left to be to be to be sorted or processed before placing in the hole. In addition to that, there's also a quality assurance, quality control procedure where the material that's proposed to be deposited. It has to be tested at a frequency of one test for every 250 cubic yards before it's even brought to the property. For for natural, for soils. But then onsite, they do additional random sampling at a frequency of one sample for every 3,000 yards, just to provide additional check to ensure that, you know, quality assurance and quality control that the material is clean. In addition to that material acceptance procedure, there's a number of exhibits. There's obviously the certificate of conformity. But then we also have a material acceptance list, which is very restrictive. It is not the entirety of the clean fill definition that has been discussed and concerned about. It only includes natural soil, rock, stone, sand, gravel, clean concrete, ceramics, brick, and asphalt paving fragments. That's the only acceptable materials that can be brought to this property. And then it also has a list of automatically rejected materials. Contaminated soil, odorous material, concrete pipe holding tanks, stained painted concrete, concrete with residual mastic, electrical wires, fabrics, roofing, siding, vinyl tile, floor coverings, glass, wood brush stumps, materials from batteries, insulation, other construction debris, trash, rubber, tires, plaster, lathes, sheet rock, surfacing materials, stucco, scrap metal, any other high-risk usage at the discretion of management. This protocol has been prepared exhaustively by an LEP with professionals to ensure that protective measures can be in place at this facility so the orderly and organized imported material can take place. Because it's not just for the commission's concern, it's for the owner's concern. The owner has to know that every load of material that comes onto this property isn't going to create a problem for him in the future. That's the difference between the Julian example. The Julian example was somebody who was who was who was managing the imported material in a municipal, a municipal facility where the municipal employees were corrupt and in on the take. That is not this. And to 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 apply that similarity between the two is just is just frankly insulting to everybody who's involved in this project, because we don't want to. Where everything we've done is trying to protect against that exact thing. So so it's an exhaustive process. In addition to that, this procedure has also been submitted to the DEP as as part of this overall process. And as Jane Warren mentioned before, she's talked to them about this site. She's talked to them about the measures that we're implementing to ensure that this site can be completed and this activity can be completed in an organized manner. That is not going to create any undue impact or harm to the environment. The go through some of the other major components. You know, the the intervenor had submitted some additional information last Tuesday. Included in that was obviously the letter from Evan Glass, which I think we tried to discuss, and Derek Jones identified a number of the the issues in that letter. They also submitted a the report from Chris Sullivan from the Southwest Conservation District, who did a, who did a, who also did a independent third-party review as part of the inland wetlands commission process. I'd like to say that that initial report was submitted, I think, in August. And the plans before the commission now are are a result of that review. The the entire application and all the drawings and reports have all been modified throughout this process, because we've been trying to adapt and respond our application based on comments and concerns raised by Chris Sullivan, raised by Russ Terenzio, and even raised by the intervenors consultants. We've we've tried to do our best to ensure that the application before this commission incorporates as many of those revisions and changes as we possibly could, because we want to make this this project the best it possibly can be. And we want to be responsive to all of these concerns, because nobody's looking to create a calamity from an environmental standpoint. The you know, we talked about, I talked about why we chose the path that we did. I talked about why not breaking into two projects. We talked a little bit about the general statutes, but general statute that we referenced does allow for commercial or industrial projects that exceed 400,000 square feet to be approved for a 10-year period. You know, our attorney has spoken with with the town attorney on that. We believe our interpretation is sufficient and that this commission can review and consider this application for a 10-year period. The I think I've addressed most of the most of the points. But obviously, you know, as I stated before, you know, we have our entire team here to answer and be responsive to any other questions by the commission. I'll note that once we did submit our revised response to comments on Tuesday, the 29th, we did receive an updated review letter from Scott Schottline, the town engineer. We're very pleased that 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 letter has been almost entirely addressed. And that he has only a very few number of comments remaining. We, my office had a conversation with Scott today. We're confident that we can address his remaining concerns without any real impact to the to the plans. And, you know, we haven't heard, we haven't gotten an additional response from Will for our response to his comments. But, you know, again, we're happy to try to address, you know, address everyone's concerns the best that we can. Because because again, this is a very simple, when when we peel all the layers back, this is a very simple application. A previous property owner did a whole bunch of stuff he shouldn't have done and left a mess. A new property owner came in, he wants to fix it. There was concern about the environmental activity that took place before. He tested it, it came back. You know, well within any kind of regulatory guidelines, and there's no environmental impact. And the Wetlands Commission's third-party consultant confirmed that and provided a report to the commission summarizing that. There's concern about our proposed activity. Is our activity going to create any environmental harm? We've done everything that we can to to demonstrate that it won't. There's questions about the use and that the filling activity is somehow a use that's not permitted in the regulation, and it's a recycling activity. We are not proposing a recycling activity. We are proposing to import material, process that material, so we can place it in the hole. That is a earthwork operation. That is, that is earthwork tied to a site plan application. The regulations enable us to do this. We've done everything that we can in accordance with the regs to prepare an application that addresses all these concerns. And we've we've tried to do our best to 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 be responsive to the commission's comments and answer your concerns. So. You know, with that, I know we've, I know we we touched on a lot of different subjects, but we'd really like to hear if the commission has any other questions or any other concerns that we haven't addressed, so we can try to address them to your satisfaction.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. I think I'm going to let the intervenor speak next. And follow that by the commissioners. This way, the commissioners will have the both sides of the story. So for the intervenor tonight.
Good evening.
Who would like to go first?
I would like to go first, Mr. Chairman, if I may. For the record, Joel Green with the offices of Green and Rose in Bridgeport, representing the intervenor. I have a number of comments, and I know that Mr. Glass wants to address the commission. But I have to make a few comments in response to the presentation by the applicant tonight. Because I think it needs to be said. First and foremost. Mr. Soli has indicated to you that the applicant wants this commission to be comfortable. And I want to emphasize how uncomfortable my client is with the current state of affairs. My client owns over 100 acres of property that abuts this. He is here because he is deeply concerned about this project. And he does not have any comfort. And Mr. Soli repeatedly made reference to this scar that was created on this property, this major scar, he said. And just to put this in context as to why my client isn't comfortable and why you should not be comfortable with this plan, I have to offer the following about the big scar. The first thing is, the applicant seems to be wanting you to look forward, look forward, look forward, and has described this elegant protocol for accepting fill. And says, really says, don't look back. And says that the applicant acquired this site in May of 2018. I'm sorry, May of 2019. So let's discuss that a little bit. Because the first thing that happened is the applicant continued to receive fill and continued to try to fill in this wound that led, that has contributed continued to try to fill in this wound that led, that has contributed to this scar. One of the first things this applicant did is he hired Mr. Soli's firm and he wants you to feel comfort because Mr. Soli has done such a careful job and has presented this plan to this commission. Well, it's come to my attention and I've seen surveys prepared by Mr. Soli's firm from 2013, from 2015, from 2018, surveys of this site. While this site was being wounded, Mr. Soli's firm was surveying it. It didn't come forward and didn't raise any alarm and was well aware of the condition of the site and the permits that were existing for the site and that this site was being wounded far beyond anything that this commission had ever, had ever permitted. So I don't take comfort in that. Next, in terms of the presentation this evening, Attorney Warren made a presentation to this commission and presented some credentials and impressive credentials, I would say. But I take issue with attorneys who appear before commissions and offer their opinions on what's right and wrong and what the law is and don't cite the law. Don't provide the law to Attorney Schellenberg who advises this commission. I'm aggravated when lawyers appear before commissions and use phrases like "the DEEP says." She said, "DEEP said, they have said to me, they have no issues." Well, DEEP consists of a commissioner, deputy commissioners staff and a large collection of folks. And if Attorney Warren has had conversations with individuals that she wants to share, then she can do that. And then we can make inquiry of those individuals and understand whether DEEP truly has concerns. And don't use the phrase "DEEP says," please. Next, when citing the law, if you have regulations in law or case law that you want to bring to Attorney Schellenberg's attention, then counsel for the applicant should do so and Attorney Schellenberg can advise this commission. But offering unfounded sweeping opinions, I don't think is, is just for fair to this commission. And the last thing is Attorney Warren, uh, there's this big scar that we're talking about. And I think that you'll find that Attorney Warren is very familiar with this site. And one thing that we have not discussed is the fact that the previous owners and operators of this site, and I believe Mr. Kimball's on tonight, and Attorney Warren might have done a service to the, this commission, been more forthright by uh, by stating her relationship to someone who is involved in the history of this site. And as I understand it, she is a sister of Mr. Kimball, who was the previous owner of this property before May of 2019. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but you should verify that. But it seems to me that before you appear before a commission and start offering sweeping opinions, that you should be more forthright on your familiarity and relationship with what happened at this site. So I have to get that off my chest and I apologize. Uh, I meant no offense to anyone. I didn't mean to impugn anyone, but I think in the fair, uh, fair presentation of the facts of law and of opinions to this commission, these facts should be made, made known. So there's that. So uh, let me get to our presentation and I, I know that it is 10 o'clock. Um, we are prepared to make a presentation this evening. Uh, we did submit materials which have been referenced and I think that uh, in order to move this along at the moment, I have a number of comments on the application, but I think Mr. Glass, uh, I think in fairness has been patient and uh, I would ask Mr. Glass to present uh, the more salient portions of his letter to the commission, which is Exhibit J02. Uh, his resume is in the record as Exhibit B03. And uh, there are also photographs and with that, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to uh, Mr. Glass to just sort of uh, review the uh, higher points of this letter.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Evan Glass. I'm a hydrogeologist and licensed environmental professional with Alt Environmental Corporation in Colchester, Connecticut. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the intervenor, Mr. Metropolis. And I thank you in advance, Chairman O'Reilly and the other commission members for providing me this opportunity. Before I summarize um my letter, I'll try to make it as, as short as possible, but, but it's pretty meaty and, and based on the conversation we've heard tonight, it's all pertinent. So if we don't get through it tonight, we'll continue on next time, I guess. Um, but uh, before I get into that, I, I want to address some of the comments that Derek Jones made on the letter and specifically. Um, he, he mentioned that stone dust would not be regulated by the DEEP in any way because it's natural. Well, it's derived from natural soil, but it's basically pulverized, crushed and changed in its physical state from, from rock to, to dust, very, very fine particles and has different properties specifically with respect to how much, how, how much natural substances can leach out of it. So the DEEP is true, what Derek said, that it's true that the DEEP does not regulate um substances in the environment that are at high levels completely naturally. But if it, but if, if iron or silica or anything else comes out of the stone dust, that's not completely natural. That's because man, man-made processes pulverized it. The analogy that we all know, and Derek Jones knows this and can disagree if he believes it's not true, is that petroleum plumes, oil plumes and groundwater mobilize the natural arsenic in the soil. The DEEP sure does require that that arsenic be regulated. And if arsenic or iron or silica or anything else comes out of the stone dust, I believe DEEP sure will regulate it. Um, I have an answer to it, a, an op, you know, I referenced this in my letter. Um, uh, Kevin Soli, uh, as engineer, did a good job in, in moving the application from where it started to where it is now. Lot of improvements. And one of them, incidentally, I don't think it was meant to do this, but it's there now, is the impermeable liner. Well, impermeable liners are used all the time in, in environmental projects to keep water away from materials we don't want water to percolate through. And so if the stone dust is of concern, it could be put under the liner and above the water table and it would be high and dry away from percolating water. Same could be said of the clean fill, same could be said of the polluted fill that's already at the site. Solid, this is a solid waste issue. Um, I disagree with Derek Jones with respect to, to whether the clean fill, the solid waste, the natural soil part of it um has been carved out by the remediation standard regulations as handled differently than the, the brick and the concrete and the asphalt and all those things which, which incidentally must be inert in order to be clean fill. They're not inert by definition because they meet the definition of clean fill. The clean fill is only clean fill if, if those things in there happen to be inert and there, and I believe there, the, um, the Brookfield case I'll talk about explains that. Um, Derek mentioned uh, that the Massachusetts DEEP did a study on natural background concentrations and that's true. And in Massachusetts, they don't, they don't regulate polluted fill like we do here in Connecticut. They don't regulate asphalt and coal ash and coal that's in all the urban soils of, of, of Connecticut and Massachusetts. And so they included all those man-made pollutants in their background samples and that's why their standard for their background level for lead is, is high. In my experience of, since 1982, working in this field, 15 is a good rule of thumb. If you're significantly over 15 for lead, very good chance you've got some contamination. And if you're anywhere up to about 15, 16, 17, 20 maybe, good chance it's natural. 65, very good chance it's contaminated. RSR applicability. Derek says the RSRs don't apply to this site. Well, a hearing officer for the declaratory ruling, the hearing officer of the DEEP declaratory hearing regarding, oh, I forget what it's regarding now, Jane can remember, I'm sure. But basically, he said that the RSRs apply to all sites all the time. Now that's got the whole environmental field trying to figure out what to do with it, but that's what he said. So RSR applicability is in limbo right now. At best, DEEP believes they do apply. Um, and uh, but, but this is not a court of law. This is not a, a, a DEEP site, as Derek said. You have to sort of understand what, you know, the, the fundamental issues are surrounding these things and then make your own decision. That it's not a court of law standard. It's a, it's a, it's a common sense standard and, and I understand you decided not to hire your own LEP and to rely on your own common sense and, and even though I uh recommended that you hire an LEP, I completely respect your decision not to and believe that you can come to uh probably a very wise decision in any case. Kevin Soli had mentioned that there were about 12,000, I think, certificates of conformance for the soil that's already at the site, for the materials that are already at the site. But those, and unless I'm wrong, those generally speaking, meaning most of them, if not almost all of them, do not have any supporting documentation associated with it for the actual materials representing the actual fills went on the site, except a piece of paper and a signature on the piece of paper that someone said was clean enough to come to the site. Now, as I'll get into my presentation, that we did, he did present some information on building surveys and things like that, demolition surveys. I don't think they're particularly relevant, but again, if, if I'm wrong about that, please correct me. Um, uh, Attorney Warren talked about how she has talked with DEEP and about it. I have talked with some people at DEEP too. A lot of people, DEEP is, is, has not issued any comment on this in any form, moment, manner whatsoever that I know of. And I think they should. I don't know if they will. They're very busy with other things. Quite frankly, this is a messy topic for them. Uh, they have two divisions that have been arguing over this for many years, which is why, as Derek Jones says, those proposed regulations by the remediation division never got approved because the waste division didn't agree with them. So you've got an argument between floor number two and floor number four of the DEEP building that's been going on for decades and you guys have to understand it and then figure out what to do about it. And I'll, I'll help you do that. Um, so the develop, the application before you is for this large project, primarily filling of the quarry. Um, a small building now, maybe two, two larger buildings in maybe eight to 10 years and it'll take that long because the, the applicant wants to use DEEP clean fill, which will take that long to source. I've looked at this proposed, this application from these perspectives. Whether the use of DEEP clean fill is appropriate for this site and if so, where such fill and certain components of it should be main or be placed. I've looked at it in terms of ensuring the adequate control and the quality of the fill materials existing and to be brought to the site through sampling and testing and assessing the quality of the fill already at the site and the potential for impacting the underlying groundwater and nearby surface water. And I've also encouraged DEEP review of the project. The intervenor has made it clear, he does not wish to be an obstructionist. He certainly does not want to delay. I know he doesn't want to be paying my bills for any longer. Um, rather, he wants the existing violations at the quarry to be mitigated and he wants that to be done in a timely manner and as a means that's appropriate to the violations that exist and appropriate to the sensitive environmental setting where the quarry sits. And with that, that in mind, I'll do the rest of my comments. In short, the initial application did not adequately address the items I talked about above and therefore the proposed plain, plan has changed significantly over the course of both the P and Z and inland wetlands hearings, which have run concurrently. The plan has changed so much that it doesn't even appear to be the same plan as initially proposed and that effectively shortens the time that the commission, the commissions have to review what is, you know, what is the endpoint of the evolving plan. So while the changes have for the most part represented improvements to the initial plan, they may not yet be adequate and they themselves pose additional questions and comments which should be addressed prior to any final applicant, any final approval. Perhaps the most significant change is the inclusion of the impermeable liner over much of the quarry area for the purpose of directing groundwater to the eastern wetlands. The liner was, is intended to mimic the original bedrock surface that's inferred to have originally directed the water to those wetlands prior to removal of the bedrock by the quarry operation. This seems to be a reasonable objective and design, but the devil's in the details which have continued to evolve, such as whether and where DEEP defined clean fill should be placed above or below the liner and the need for a natural soil filter near the wetlands. The applicant may consider expanding the purpose of the liner to also include isolating the clean fill and any polluted soil from both human contact and infiltrating precipitation. This would be consistent with maintaining the fill as DEEP defined inaccessible soil and environmentally isolated soil, which the DEEP agrees, sorry Joel, does not pose an unacceptable risk to the human health or the environment and is routinely used and is a routinely used remediation approach. Hence, the current iteration of this application may be more appropriate as a starting point for design review rather than an endpoint. Because this application may be for the largest and most complicated plan that has been before your commission, I would recommend that if all the information needed for you to make an informed decision is not available to you with enough time to review it, that you should reject the application without prejudice and then the application can be resubmitted with a design that has taken more considered cognizance of the comments received from you, inland wetlands, and perhaps the DEEP, leaving sufficient time for your consideration. So some of the changes that the design has undergone through this process. Initially, the plan was to bring in enough fill to closely match the original topography and ridgeline. The first plan not include the buried impervious liner to direct water to the wetlands and would have met the zoning regulations purpose of preserving ridgelines. The current plan is to bring in less fill and does not propose to restore the original ridgeline and to use the impervious liner, which is still a massive plan of long duration and a more complicated plan than the original plan. Not clear that the original plan would work to, to direct waters to the wetlands because the applicant's estimate of the post-filling water table elevation of the hole is 411 feet and the wetlands are at about 447 to 450 feet. So another change. The original plan called for the use of any and all types of DEEP clean fill anywhere on the site, above and below the water table. The current plan is to use only natural soil and rock materials below the water table, although much of this may be the quarry tailings or the mine waste or the rock flower, however you want to call it according to the applicant, and to limit the use of asphalt only to the roadways. But it's not clear that these intentions have been written into the plan presently before, you know, it's a very voluminous plan. It has, it's changes all the time. I just haven't seen the, I've heard those things spoken of at the hearings, but I haven't seen them written in the plan. If they're there, please point them out. Um, so to keep the soil above the water table may, may or may not be adequately protective of the natural resources because precipitation percolates through the materials above the water table as well as through materials below the water table. So rock flower above the water table may be a problem, even as rock flower below the water table also may be a problem. Um, I'll diverge here to, just to talk about the iron possible problem. Iron is natural. Um, I have been at a lot of places where people come to me and say, there's a landfill there. Look at that iron. Look at that iron plume spewing out into the wetlands. Look at, and you see iron precipitated. It looks horrible. And what it is, is natural soil that's been placed on top of a well. Earth, earth and dams are a very common example. 150 years ago, an earth and dam was built. Even now, this very obvious iron precipitation, iron mobilization coming out of that. People come to me and they say, someone's got a landfill there. I say, nope, it's iron being mobilized by that fill that was placed there 150 years ago. So conventional construction practice is to fill below the water table using a natural stone product that's much coarser than stone dust. If stone dust is to be used to fill below the water table, it would seem prudent that the applicant should provide an adequate assessment of its appropriateness just to make sure that it's not going to be a problem. I think there's a good chance it would be a problem. So I think there's that, that demonstration should be made to commission. I'm trying to read through to see what I can cut out since, since a lot of, all of this is in the record already. I'll note that WSP's testing of the film materials was at a frequency somewhere between one sample every 2,700 cubic yards to one sample for every 3,700 cubic yards, depending upon how you count. But in any case, it's at much less frequency than the one sample for 250 cubic yards that the applicant itself is proposing for the testing of the material. So it appears that additional characterization is needed of the fill and of the groundwater beneath the fill to assess whether the existing fill is suitable to remain or must be removed. I have heard that materials exceptions procedure has been sent to the DEP. I would like to know to who it's been sent. I have asked people at DEP if they have seen it and nobody has seen it that I have spoken to. But I'm sure it's there. And, and I, I think it would be very useful to get DEP's comments on the material acceptance procedure and of the overall quarry filling plan. The sensitivity of the project's environmental setting has been gone over a few times, so I'll, I'll skip past that. What is clean fill? The applicant uses the phrase, initially uses the phrase material, which meets the DEP definition of clean fill to seemingly to suggest that the quality of such material is without question just because it sounds clean and that DEP seems to be sanctioning it, that, that it should be of no concern to town commissions. How DEP regulates waste is one thing. How towns, what town commissions would like on their, in their towns is another thing. But it should take cognizance of, of, of what DEP thinks of clean fill and the problems that DEP has had historically in trying to manage clean fill. So clean fill is solid waste. The natural soil component of it gets carved out. And clean fill is a category of solid waste that the DEP has said does not need a solid waste permit if that is the only thing being disposed. But at this site, we know other things other than clean fill have been disposed. We know polluted fill has been disposed. We know that, we know that cinder block, tar coated cinder block is in the documents as being disposed. And cinder block is not a component of clean fill. We know that lots of asphalt, small granules of asphalt have been disposed of at the site. And DEP does not consider fragments less than four inches to be clean fill. So my reading is that a DEP solid waste permit is needed for this site. And you do get extra protections when you do get permitting. Whether DEP will do that or not is a question. I think we clarified that the applicant is proposing to, for soil, only to accept what is defined as natural soil, meaning no contamination at all. If it's soil, is that correct? Maybe just a nod? Hello, can anyone hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I hear you.
Okay. So my question, I just had a, an interest first question here. If I could ask the applicant whether he is saying that, that the only soil that they accept through their material acceptance procedure is, is natural soil, no contamination at all? Is that, is that, is that the, is that the plan? Because that's, that's what Derek seemed to say. And that's what, that's how I read the plan. But it is a little vague, so I just wanted to get a yes and no on that.
Yeah, that's correct. And that's, that's detailed in our material acceptance procedure.
Thank you. So DEP does have itself a problem with the definition of clean fill. In 2008, they did a lot of work on it. Ms. Diane Dugger, a very accomplished person at DEP, as, as attorney Warren will, will attest to, did a very good job of it and it never got promulgated. They wanted to separate out the natural soil part more, more deliberately than through the RSRs. They wanted to separate it out in their solid waste regulations and, and to manage natural soil one way and to match, manage asphalt and brick and concrete as regulated fill. Still hasn't been worked out. But just because something meets the quote DEP definition, DEP clean fill, does not mean that everybody at DEP thinks it should be placed anywhere in the environment. There's a lot of information on DEP's website on this. And that's an indication if DEP had abandoned its view on clean fill, it, it wouldn't be posted on DEP's website. I mentioned a I mentioned the case in Danbury Superior Court. It involves a quarry in Brookfield. And, and it hinged on, on whether the clean fill was inert and did not pose a threat of contamination. And, and basically, the court was not persuaded that those materials met the definition of clean fill, citing that an essential element of the definition of clean fill is that the materials must be inert and not pose a threat of contamination. And that just because it was called clean fill did not mean that it was inert. Court decided that in order for something to be clean fill, it has to be inert. Not that it is inert just because it meets the definition of clean fill. The material acceptance procedure has come a long way. And, and for the better. There are still some items that I think can be improved. I've outlined them in my, my letter. I will not go through most of them, but I will focus on the one or two items, or maybe just one, and that is that, or two, maybe, that, that record keeping and reporting requirements be included and that LEPs be the one to, to plan and oversee the sampling and testing at the sites, at, at the sites where the material's coming from. That shouldn't pose an imposition on the, on the applicant because it's being done by other people bringing it in. But I'll go over some of the, some of the virtues of LEPs later. And, and I'll leave it at that for, for those recommendations on the material acceptance plan. But I have about a dozen details in there that, that you can read. So the DEP may not have proactive authority to come to this site. It may decide it doesn't want to get involved with this site. A lot of people have contacted DEP. They haven't been forthcoming. But there's still something the town can do to, to really go a long way for making sure the site doesn't become a problem in the future. And that's to require LEPs to do some of the work like I mentioned before. In order for LEPs to maintain their licenses, we have to abide by very rigorous rules of professional conduct and a list, just three of them. An LEP must at all times hold paramount the health, safety and welfare of the public and the environment. An LEP must make a good faith effort and a reasonable effort to identify and obtain all the relevant data and other information needed. And at any time after an LEP renders a conclusion, an LEP learns that, of data that are contrary that, to that conclusion, the LEP must promptly notify the client and in some cases notify the DEP. Hence, the town can arrange for a high degree of quality control of a site activities by requiring the LEP involvement throughout the, the filling portion of the project and following the filling portion of the project for, for the monitoring. With respect to the groundwater testing, there only two wells were, were monitored. And they're both about 1,000 feet away from the main area of debris that WSP tested. And there were no contour maps that are, I saw to show that that, those wells were down gradient. One was a bedrock well and one was an overburdened well. And the groundwater contour maps for both of those can be different. And the other sample they took was that those wells were in a southerly direction from the, I'll call it the debris area. And the, and the hole is in a northerly direction from the debris area. And the hole is filled with water and the water was tested. But the water is also largely runoff water, rainwater. So it's pretty diluted. There, there are rock fractures along the rock face of that hole where groundwater comes out. And that water is, is, you know, representative of groundwater. But also, right where the debris was tested, right where the lead exceedance was found, the exceedance of the gluten mobility criteria, there's no monitoring well there. And, and so while it's true no contamination was found, it, there was very sparse testing done from a groundwater, from a groundwater characterization standpoint. Two wells, 1,000 feet away from the main area of interest and one surface water sample in that, that's, you know, largely, you know, likely rainwater is, is not enough data to draw a reliable conclusion, in my opinion, for any site, but certainly for a site in a sensitive setting like this, that's, that's going to be, you know, filled for many, many years before it's finally finished. But I think that's the highlights of, of my, my letter. I can go into any additional detail that anyone wants to. There were some lingering questions. I recall at both commissions that the applicant was requested to prepare a site plan showing the planned final groundwater elevations on cross-sections and also showing the pre-quarry grade, the existing grade, the proposed grade, and the, the, and as I said, the existing and the final groundwater elevations. And I don't believe that that, that I've seen that in the application materials. So at this point, I'll, I'll take any questions you may have. And thank you for bearing with me on the relatively long presentation late at night.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Green, do you have any other presenters tonight before we go to the commissioners for questions?
I have a, I have a presentation for the commission. I think I'd be happy to follow the commission's questions.
Okay, then let's go to the commissioners. We'll, we'll start at the other end tonight. We'll start with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you, Mike. Um, a lot of the questions I had were, were addressed. One question that, and I apologize if I missed it. Have we gotten the, the material acceptance procedure back from DEP yet?
Mr. Solley, was it sent to DEP?
Kevin, this is Jane Warren. Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
I submitted it to DEP a couple of months ago and they don't have to comment or respond or return it or anything else. It's, I sent it to them as a courtesy only.
Who did you send it to?
I sent it to Robert Eisner, Mark Jepson, Phil Trowbridge and Joseph Shavoni.
Thank you.
And Jane, for the record, can you tell us who, who those people are? What positions they hold?
I can tell you that Robert Eisner, Jane Warren here, Robert Eisner is the director of the Waste Engineering and Enforcement Division. And I don't know if I can tell you what everyone else's titles are. They all work for Robert.
Yeah, I, I think it was important that, for the commission to understand that Robert Eisner is the guy from an enforcement standpoint. So we went to the top. We didn't start at a low level. Jane's relationships are at a very different level. So I want the commission to understand that this has been
To clarify, that's in the waste division. Waste.
Yes.
And enforcement.
Also a remediation division that has to do with clean things. Waste is waste. And, and clean is the remediation division for the Department of Public Health. So just, just so the commission knows that there are different divisions. And, and even though you're saying that clean fill is not solid waste, you're submitting it to the waste division.
But the reason, Mr. Glass, this is Jane Warren for the record, that I submitted it to Robert was because the intervenor had made a complaint to Mark Jepson. And Mark Jepson works with Robert Eisner in enforcement. And so I responded to the inter, the person that the intervenor had filed a complaint with and his supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you. My other question, Kevin, thank you very much for going over some of the questions I had regarding the material coming in and the, the quality control over was in there. Is there going to be any sort of records kept that can be looked at to confirm what has gone in? Confirm the levels that were found? Is there going to be any kind of audit record to, so that we know going forward exactly what went in there? And not just someone saying, you know, we scanned it, we're good?
Yes, all the, all the records are going to be maintained on the site. You know, the applicant's happy to provide the commission with, you know, with periodic reports, with summaries, with access to the material, to the, to the information. I mean, there's certainly likely to be some, you know, customer information that would, you know, or that would probably want to be redacted and things like that. But the applicant is here to work with the town and the commission to, to, you know, address all the concerns.
Kevin, it's, it's Arnold Karp, Nicole. Just to let you know, when we purchased the property, we purchased any and all records and we have file cabinets. We keep everything in. So yes, we have no problem coming back to the commission or the town to show that what we're doing is exactly what we said we'd be doing.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions right now until we get the wetland report back for myself.
And Nicole, and I'd certainly encourage the commission to, to make that a condition of approval. You know, whatever, whatever, whatever frequency the commission wants to see us before you or provide copies of reports, we're happy to do that.
Great, thank you. I'm all set, Mike.
Chairman, I have one more sentence to add if I could. Chairman, I have one more sentence to add if I can.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I spoke with Mr. Frank Gagliardo at DEP. His name was given to me by Diane Duvie as the point man on something like this. And he told me that the applicant should request a DEP pre-application meeting. So DEP can identify any and all permits, even if they're none, that may be needed and to address any other DEP concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Lupo, any other questions? Did you say none?
I'm all set right now, Mike. Thank you.
All right, then Commissioner Panici.
I can no more questions at this time.
Commissioner Schneider.
I'd just like to say that I think something has to give here. I think we really need to come up with something exactly that we want to be done so we can move forward. I would like to comment on Kevin, what he said earlier that the client and the property bought and immediately came in front of the commission to fix or repair the property. I think we all know that that's not really the way it went down. But the, the current health and safety conditions of this property is the most important concern to everyone. It just seems to me that everything said is how you've done enough. And with the town interest of this, probably more interest than anything in decades, I, I, why haven't you done, gone above and beyond with ample testing to ensure absolutely, without question, nobody in this commission or this town has to worry? No matter what Leon can bring up as far as a product, the answer is we tested it three times with three different companies and, and every area of the property.
May I, may I address the commission? This is, this is Attorney Warren. May I just respond to that?
Yes.
Okay, um, not only did our LEP test, but the town's LEP, Restoranza with Arcadis, reviewed, did a peer review of all of the information and the sampling that we did and said it was sufficient. And I'd also like to just reiterate for the commission that after the intervenor filed a complaint with the DEEP, they did come out and inspect the site and there has not been any enforcement action or any follow-up action from DEP. So the fact that, that, oh, I almost called him Attorney Glass, that Mr. Glass contacted someone who has no interest or knowledge of this property and said, oh, yes, they should request a pre-application review is completely meaningless. Should DEP would have, would have everybody call them all the time if, if, if they could. But it's not required and it's not needed and there's no permit needed. And I don't think we need to rehash that again. I just wanted to state for the record that after the complaint was filed, there's been no follow-up action from, from the regulators.
Is there any paperwork on that, Attorney Warren, from when DEP went out? I'd like to see something from DEP in writing.
We've submitted that, we've actually submitted that for the record. We submitted the inspection reports that were provided. That is in the, that is in the original submission material.
Okay, thank you.
While there is no requirement for DEP to, to have a pre-application meeting or for the applicant, there's no DEP requirement that the applicant go and ask for one. But it, but the commission, your commission could actually ask the applicant to ask for a pre-application meeting. You can, you are the town governance. You're the, you're the, you're the last, the last buck stops with you. You, the DEP is not going to protect everybody all the time. And sometimes the towns have to take it upon themselves and do common sense things like ask an applicant to ask for a pre-application meeting, even though legally it's not required.
Actually, Mr. Glass, Mr. Right, this is Attorney, I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, it was me. You were interrupting me. It's fine.
I'm sorry. I don't mind interrupting you, Kevin. I do, I do want to point out that Mr. Glass is, is not an attorney. He's been citing case law. We've seen other people cite case law inappropriately on behalf of the intervenor. And so anything that Mr. Glass says about the law frankly is, is, is not really to be considered by this.
Not a court of law. This is a, a.
Mr. Glass, excuse me, I'm speaking, Mr. Glass. You cited case law, you cited case law. You said that a judge held this and held that. That's not appropriate. In addition, I do want to point out that, you know, this commission, and I'm sure Tony Schellenberg can be heard on this. There, you have your regulations. Your regulations prescribe your purview. And that's sort of what is in play here. You cannot, and we, no one wants to generate an appeal here. You cannot delegate your, your job and your jurisdiction over matters to another agency. That will generate an appeal. That's exactly what the intervenor wants. They've made that clear both in the Inland Wetlands Commission and here. And so that's, and I do want to point out that even before we filed the applicant, these applications before the Inland Wetlands Commission and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I reached out to Attorney Green and said, look, let's work collaboratively on this. If you have suggestions, if you want to tweak our plans, please come to us. Talk to your client, come to us. Let's come up with a joint plan that we can present that takes care of your concerns within reason. Look, we might have to negotiate certain things. They never, they never took us up on that. When did we first get some kind of alternative plan from them? At the last meeting before the Inland Wetlands Commission, they submitted a concept plan that they couldn't even justify at the very last hearing. And the reason for that is they're not interested in moving this along.
Attorney Finn, you're getting off the topic now. I'd like to go back to the commissioners, please. This is not dueling expert hour.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Schneider.
I'm done.
Can I just, I just want to address Commissioner Snyder's comment. You know, I, I'm not exactly sure what you meant in terms of we didn't do what, what we said. I, I can assure you, we had a meeting with, I think Mr. Karp bought the property in May. We called the town and we had a very large meeting with town staff and the town attorney, Vin Marino, in June of 2019. So it is the first thing we did. We then came to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not sure you were a member at the time, but we had a big picture discussion about what we wanted to do. And then we spent about four to five months working with the regulation subcommittee, refining a regulation that could be proposed and applied to this site to bring this project forward. And then due to continued and repeated complaints by the intervenor, the Wetlands Commission issued a violation and the Planning and Zoning Commission basically said, we don't want to talk to you about this anymore until you deal with wetlands. So I, 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 I don't want, I, I don't think I spoke out of turn before when I said the first thing that he did was come to the town, because it was, and, and we did do that.
Within, Commissioner Schneider, it's, it's Arnold Karp. I was within Town Hall. We, we purchased it on a Thursday. I called Town Hall on a Friday and I believe we were in front of various members from the Fire Marshal's Office on down, I believe, the following Thursday. So we purchased it on a Thursday and within a week's time, we were in front of the town explaining what we'd like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Karp. And that is true. I was involved in some of the early meetings. They did come to us soon after he did purchase the property. Commissioner Westland, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I would certainly like to know that the, any and all incoming materials be manifested going forward and that, you know, this be monitored on a regular basis. I think that goes without saying. And as far as questions, I think we've, we've, we've exhausted the question issue. I'm, I'm all set.
Commissioner Condon.
So yeah, I have a question, I guess, for the intervenor. We've heard from the applicant, reached out to members of DEP. And Mr. Glass mentioned that he had reached out to one. Has the intervenor or his attorney, have you reached out to DEP also?
Yes, we, we have, and Mr. Glass can elaborate on his.
I just wanted to know if you had. I didn't, I didn't, you know, you had before that, you know, you saying what the answer they gave you might not be great.
For at least four members.
Okay.
Four or five members at least.
Okay, and a couple of meetings ago now, the neighbor, the intervenor had mentioned that there was a issue with trespassing on the property. And he thought it was appropriate to report that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. At that time, we said that would be something that you'd want, that'd be a police matter. Has he made reports to the police department regarding that? Or has he only thrown that in front of us that you're aware of?
I'm sorry, the intervener?
Yes, the intervener, Mr. Metropolis, had come on our meeting and told us that there was trespassing happening on the, on the property.
This is Metropolis, the intervener. Hi. I had gotten a phone call from somebody who was on my property, taking a look around. He just mentioned that some kids were on a motorcycle and that he thought somebody would get hurt. And since Mr. Karp decided he would put that big berm over there that kids like to drive up and down, he thought it was a little kooky. So he let me know for my own liability. I brought it up to Mr. Schultz as an FYI. And just with you guys, I'm not the one that's going to get sued, but you guys would. And it was never brought. I didn't, no, I hadn't been calling the police because real time I'm in Los Angeles. But I did grow up on the property at 625 Van Hill Road. And I did go to Fawn Hollow Elementary School. So Mr. Solich with his comments about a guy from out of town, I know the property well and I grew up on it. So any other questions of me?
Yeah, I guess another question would be, has there been other, other complaints or files? Have you guys reached out to other commissions, boards, departments? Because I'm concerned that our next meeting, we're going to get hit with all of a sudden other things. I, I feel like every meeting, it's a new, there's a new thing. And I understand where the applicants, I think I understand what their end game is, where they want to go. And I, I've yet to hear it from you guys. I, I feel like all I'm getting is much longer, not a final project idea.
My issue is the same. That was, I think, when I first came, I think it was in May when I first met Mr. Rick Schultz and Ken Kellogg. I took a bunch of pictures of dump trucks dumping construction debris into one of the holes that was completely full. My property is on a well, along with all the neighboring properties. Rick, I think, can verify this. I took photos with a high-definition lens and it was asphalt. It was concrete. There was rebar. Every bit of construction debris put below the water table. I put it on a hard drive. It got delivered to the town. I got, hey, I think it's wrong. It's my property and I'm not going to let somebody destroy the land that I own. Pretty simple.
Commissioner, Commissioner Condon.
Witnessed the construction, the dump trucks dumping it below grade. And by the way, where they tested was nowhere near. The aerial photographs show that the deepest part of the holes. Your turn.
Commissioner Condon.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, that'll do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Maene.
Wow. I, I only have a couple of questions. So I understand that the materials that are currently on the property are not contaminated. I don't, I don't think we ever thought they were. I, I mean, I, unless, I mean, at least I didn't, I never thought that. My bigger concern is the stuff coming in, right? So we understand we have a hole. We understand we're, we're, we're halfway to China. I get it. We need to fill it. My concern is about the stuff coming in. Obviously, obviously, there's got to be a trust factor. There has to be the ability that Mr. Karp, who, who, you know, is going to do the best he can, it's his property, I, I would assume. And I, I don't think he's given us any other reason why he wouldn't do the best he could. So I think to put some people at ease, including myself, I, 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 I would like a way that we could have, I understand every load's going to be tested or whatever, it's going to be clean fill. But I, I would like a, a way that we could find it to come back to us. Because this project's going to take forever. This is not a, I, I honestly, doing some thinking today, I don't even feel in 10 years you can fill that hole. So hear me out on that if you want. You're going to take in an X amount of trucks, correct? Then in those X amount of trucks, there's going to be rebar. There's going to be crap that can't go into that. And then that stuff needs to be separated and sent somewhere else. Am I, am I off topic so far?
Well, you can always pay for clean dirt, soil.
Yeah, but my question, Mr. Metropolis, I appreciate your comment, but I'm not, I'm not really talking to you.
Oh.
This is, this is towards the property owner, Mr. Metropolis, not, not towards you. Kevin, talk to me.
Yes, yeah.
You're going to take in an X amount of truckloads, right? You need an X amount of truckloads to fill the hole, right? Whatever that X number. But what I'm saying is that X number is not going to fill that hole. Because what's going to happen is there's going to be stuff that comes in that needs to be separated, that needs to be not put in that hole, that, you know, you're going to get in metal, right? Because you're going to get some sort of concrete or rebar, something like that separated. And then that has to go in another truck that needs to get out of there that way also. So.
That's correct.
So my fear is that in that 10-year period, we're, we're not going to get that hole filled. And I'm not saying that that's anything to do with, with Mr. Karp, the property owner. But what I'm saying is the stuff that comes in and the stuff that goes out. How are, what is our reassurance that we're getting the, the right materials into the ground? Because listen, this is a hot button topic today. I don't under, I don't know if in a year or two or three, it's still going to be a hot button topic. But as long as I'm on this commission, it's going to be hot to me.
I, I think that, I think the re, part of the reassurance is that if Mr. Karp, you know, the, the ultimate goal for this property is to place this fill in this material in a way that you can build a building on it in the future. You can't just dump, you know, concrete and rebar and then try to compact it and actually build a building on top of it. And frankly, I'm going to tell you something else. Any potential operator or potential purchaser of this property is going to do their own due diligence and make sure that what they're building on is structurally sound and not environmentally impacted. That, that's the first.
That part I don't question. I question the materials going into the hole. And how, how often are we going to get a report on it? How, I, I mean, I don't.
How often would you like a report on it? And that's, that's a good point though. But, and I want to bring something else up because Mr. Green made a comment before about our activity on the, on the property previously and that we never said anything about it. That is, that is factually incorrect. And one of the concerns, one of the concerns is, hang on, hang on. No, no, but, but hang on. One of the conditions of approval from the original approval that was granted in 2016 or 2006 was that the applicant was required to submit quarterly inspection reports to town staff. Those reports were submitted by Mr. Dave Bjorklund, the intervenor's engineer, up until we took over. And then we submitted quarterly inspection reports up until September of 2018. Basically, and, and every one of those inspection reports told the town staff exactly the condition of the property. They told town staff exactly how many yards of material were removed from the site. It documented that. Town staff did nothing about it.
Right.
If these inspection reports need to also go to the commission to provide additional, an additional layer of oversight, we strongly recommend and encourage that. we strongly recommend and encourage that be the case. In addition to that, I think this commission should also condition that the applicant's required to come back before you, whether it's annually or biannually, to give you a status update, to show you pictures, to say, this is how much material came in, this is how high it is, this is the material that has been, that, you know, this is the, the material type, to provide periodic updates, because I agree with you. Um, the commission does wanna make sure that this doesn't fall into a void and get ignored, because when things get ignored in town, that's when bad things happen.
Absolutely, so that's the, that's the point I'm getting at. I do, I, I'm assuming, because I haven't heard it from his mouth directly, I'm assuming Mr. Carp would be okay with that.
Bruno, I ha- I have my hand up, and, and here's the short answer. I'm happy to come back to you guys as often as you'd like, provide whatever documentation will make you guys feel better. Remember, I have millions of dollars that I've already invested in this piece of property, okay? So the oversight is not a problem, you know, I bought it. Uh, I went to the town, I've had Kevin doing all of the testing, even though nothing is going on there. Uh, so I'm happy to go under any, I'll say, magnifying glass uh, that makes the commission and the town happy, you know, uh. The issue that, how this got here, I don't know how, what happened to the prior fifteen years and what reports.
But Mr. Carp, I'm not. Mr. Carp, I'm not worried about how it got here, because it's, it's there, it's there, we can't, we can't go back in the past, so it's there. I'm, I'm not worried about how it's, how it got there. How it got there was mismanagement, was poor leadership, was people taking advantage of stuff. That, that's all in the past, we, we can't go back on that. I need to worry about the future. I got young kids in this town, and I don't wanna put my name on something that, that is gonna embarrass me, the town, or, or anyone associated with this town, so. So I, I think.
I'm happy to come in front of you guys, if it's twice a year, you know, quarterly reports, and a visit by me or somebody from my staff. Uh, be it twice a year, uh, whatever it takes to get you guys comfortable that we are the real deal. The biggest problem I, I'm going to have, Bruno, and you, you, you're correct, is to source clean fill. This year alone, as I've been in front of this commission for, in Wetlands for over a year, I've lost over two hundred thousand yards of clean fill coming off a school project. I can't tell you guys exactly how it's gonna come in, because I've gotta make sure it's tested and clean. We had recently, somebody came to us and said, oh, we have topsoil. We did the test, and we actually found out that it wasn't clean. Actual protocol, that was worth a hundred thousand cubic yards that they said, oh, no, no, but it's perfect, we tested it, we found it wasn't. But if the commission would like, you know, uh, I'm gonna call it a semi-annual visit from me and my staff and quarterly reports, I'm happy to do that. I have a lot of time, money, and effort to do that.
To put everybody at ease, we're gonna have to do something along those lines.
We don't, we don't, we don't have a problem with that, you know, we've tried to make this as transparent as we can, and whatever you guys feel comfortable with, we're prepared to, to work with you on.
Excellent, now, one more question that keeps coming up that we, I don't know if we've really gotten the answer to yet, is is you've done test holes, you've done boring pits, so, or test pits, boring holes, you've done all that kinda stuff. We still have, do we have an idea of what went back into those holes?
What do you mean? Yeah.
I gotta, what do you mean, and I gotta, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, we, we know all, we know all the material has been brought to the property. We provided manifests for any records that we have, anything that came on the property, and we've tested that material.
Okay.
No, manifests have not been provided.
Excuse me, Mr. Green, Mr. Green, we did provide information, I suggest you check the record. Because we provided documentation on, on all the material that's been brought to the property, provided testing, and that testing is verified that the site does not have environmental contamination. And that was, that was verified and supported by Mr. D'Renzo, who was an LEP hired by the Wetlands Commission.
Who said the plan won't work.
Okay, Mr. Green, this is Commissioner testing time, I mean Commissioner testing, Commissioner question time. Can we please go back to um.
I think it's a good point that Kevin can clarify, if Kevin could just explain what you mean by manifest and what you mean by the, the data.
Hey, Mr. Glass, I really appreciate you taking my question.
Sorry.
I know, just, just give me a second, I was getting there, buddy.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Maene.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Glass took my commissioner spot, so.
Well, we're gonna try to keep that to a minimum.
Thank you. Um, Kevin, so everything's been submitted, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, i- i- with the exception of twelve hundred sheets of paper for, certificate of conformity for every load that's been brought on the property since um, Mr. Carp purchased the property. And that would be, that's because in order for us to submit that, that's a hundred and twenty thousand sheets of paper, that's two hundred and some odd pieces of paper, and, right.
I don't have enough time in my day.
Can I ask a question?
Bruno, I can answer that, anything that has come in, we have a manifest from.
Correct, and I know that you're keeping it, you, you said in the last previous couple meetings that you're keeping it in a file cabinet and so on and so forth. We, we, we could come to the file cabinet, we could go through it if we plan and wish.
But, but, also, just, just, we have submitted that to the town, so that
Okay.
you know, Stratford High School, we have given you all the reports that we got prior to that coming to the site.
Um, my questions are, my questions are more simple, yes or no? So we don't need to get into it, because we've gotten into it a million times. Um, another question I have is why, uh, why are we not testing closer to the to the hole? Why are we thousands of feet away?
From a, from a groundwater standpoint?
Correct.
Well, we tested the surface water, which is the water in the hole.
Okay.
And then there were existing wells that are down gradient from that source that were tested. We didn't drill any new wells, because frankly, water flows down gradient, and we tested the wells down gradient from the source material.
So what you're telling me, what you're telling me is that water from the hole, just to, I'm trying to make it simple. The water from the hole is filling the wells that were pre-existing.
It's hydro- it's hydraulically connected, yes, the groundwater is all hydraulically connected.
Correct, that's, I'm just trying to put it in, I'm trying to put it in simple, simple man's terms.
That's a well-supported statement.
Um, Mr. Glass, this is Commissioner question time. I wanna have to put you on mute.
Okay.
Um, I'm actually all set with my questions, uh, Mike, thank you so much, Kevin, Mr. Carp, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yeah, Kevin, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Question is that you, what kind, what kinda material you're gonna take into the site?
All the material that's identified in the material except its procedure, so clean fill, natural soil.
Got that.
Yeah, I can read, natural soil, rock, stone, sand, gravel, clean concrete, ceramics, brick, asphalt paving fragments.
So that's what you're gonna truck into the site?
Yes.
So why do you need a crusher to process it?
Well, similar to, well, because the, the material that comes in, if it's a, say demolition debris, the material has to be, be processed. The rebar has to be pulled out, any other deleterious material has to be pulled out, and it has to be processed so that it can be placed structurally.
So, yeah, but I wanna be clear, demolition material does not meet clean fill category.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
So you're not making clean fill out of that? You're taking them, there's no rebar and everything like that, when you bring in demolition material, that's not considered clean fill. That, you're gonna process it, remove, remove the rebar out of it, because you can't put that in the ground, and then that becomes clean, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Because I just wanted that you say that we're bringing in clean fill, because bringing in construction material, we're gonna recycle it on that property, and then we're gonna take out the bad and put the other stuff that's, you consider clean fill into the ground.
That's correct, I, I take some exception to the, to, you're saying recycling, because if we were recycling it, we would be then selling that material back into the market, and we're not doing that, we're placing it in the, in the hole.
And what are you gonna do with the excess material?
That's gonna have to be disposed of, as we talked about with Mr. Maene.
Okay, and how's that gonna be done?
It's gonna be trucked off in accordance with, you know, how that happens on every other site in town where there's active site work.
Okay, so, right, basically, well, I just want, I just wanted to be clear on that, that we're not bringing in clean fill, we're bringing in demolition material and we're creating clean fills. So basically, recycling material on the property. Now, you say you're not selling it, but you're still recycling it, I said recycling is, is you're making one product, so you can put it into, into the ground, so you're recycling on the property. What you do with the material afterwards, or what you do with the metal afterwards, is considered recycling to me. That's, that's basically what I have. The other question I had to ask you is, was there any violations on the property before Mr. Carp brought the property?
There was, there was a notice of potential violation issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think in two thousand and fifteen, I think you were on the commission at that time. We came in to address that, the former owner came in to address that and got an approval for a subdivision um, which is uh, duly um, issued and, and currently under construction.
Yeah, 'cause I just wanted to be clear that the town did act on it before, because you stated that like, that the town never acted on it, but the town did act on violations before, and it never was resolved, I just wanted to clarify that, because when you spoke, you said in two thousand and nineteen, you know, Mr. Carp took this over, and before that, the town didn't do anything about it. But I, I'm sure that we could pull records out that proves that the town has put violations on that property. So the town was aware, the previous owner was aware, and the new property owner was aware that was violations on it before he brought the property. I just wanna state that for, on the record, because I don't wanna be misled that, you know, because you did state that, you know, that nothing was done, but there was stuff done beforehand. And so I just, I just wanna state that on the record, because we gotta be clear on this, so that all the commissioners know that this property's had a history, it's not doubt that the town hasn't been aware of it, the town has been real, well aware of it. The town approached the previous property owner to, to address some of these violations, and nothing was done about it. It also was pushed down the, down the, down the path, and it never got to the point where it is now. So I just wanna be clear that, I don't wanna, that when you say stuff like that, that, you know, the town wasn't aware, the town was aware, but they didn't do nothing about it, they actually did. But not that it went so far, because it didn't, but it, it did happen. And the other thing is, like I said, I don't wanna be like, told that you're bringing clean fill into the property when you're bringing construction material into the property, and it has to be processed on a Metropoly property, which in turns is a recycling operation. And we don't have regulations for a recycling operation.
We, we, this is, I, you, Mr. Mr. Ambrosi, I respectfully disagree that the applicant, that this is a recycling op- operation, because this is not a recycling operation. We're not proposing a recycling as a use, we're not proposing it as an, as an operation, we're proposing to to, we're proposing earthwork associated with a site plan, and that earthwork, material needs to be processed. This commission has, has, has granted fill permits and allowed for applicants to process material on other similar applications.
And I, and I understand that, and I, and, and there, there is different, like, well, just for crushing and stuff like that, processed material, I understand all that. But I'm just saying to you is that, when, when you state that you're gonna bring clean fill into the property, you're basically not bringing clean fill into the property, you're bringing in whatever debris you can bring into the property, you're making clean fill out of it. And I just wanted to state that for the record, that that's what is going to go on, and in this way, we're well aware of that. Because we have to worry, we don't have to worry about just what you bring into the property, we have to worry about dust control, we have to worry about all these measures that we have to have in place. And so that's what the commission has to be concerned about, that's, I was just, and that's basically right now, the only questions I have.
Okay, but, thank you, Commissioner Ambrosi, I'm gonna have to wrap this up now. Everyone's had a turn to speak, and all of the commissioners have asked their questions. So we're going to leave this um, application open, as we have to, since we haven't heard back from um, inland wetlands with an approval. So we will close this meeting.
Mike, do we need to open it up to the public?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I think legally, we had to open it up to the public.
Okay, then. Are there any members of the public that have not spoken tonight that would like to speak? I think I hear Mr. Benofsky, go ahead, Mr. Benofsky.
Okay, I have, uh, I'll be, I'll try and be brave, I'm as tired as you all are, I don't know how you're doing it. Uh, I, uh, I, I'm glad the town, uh, the commission is, is, had on the, the numbers, commissioners have spoken already, dealing with the material acceptance procedure. Uh, just briefly, the way I understand it, you're getting certified material in from somewhere uh, that is certified somewhere off-site, uh, the bullet, the credibility of which, I don't know uh, how you validate the uh, the trustworthiness of the place who's giving you the cert. Uh, somebody, I think it was uh, uh, Mr. Glass said you might wanna use LEPs on-site of the source of the material. Uh, I don't, I, I, I think that's where it should start. Then you have the question of uh, chain of custody of the material from the source to uh, y- your site there at the uh, the, 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 um, I forget the name of the street you're at there, to your site. And there's a lot of opportunity between, in trucking it, and Mr. Soli indicated that you're dealing with, he was uh, gonna test every uh, three thousand yards or so as a sampling, just to assure a chain of good material. Well, within three thousand yards, I just say a ten-yard truck, you're talking, what, three hundred truckloads? Uh, and what guarantees that it's all from the same site, it could be from numerous sites and different, by the time you get to the end of the three hundred, uh, three thousand yards, how many sites would make up that that material that was delivered during that site there? A lot of opportunity for fraud to come in. I, I worked in manufacturing for years, I know there's things like powdered asbestos in uh, old barrels all over Bridgeport that uh, was disposed of over the years, could be contaminating soil that's taken from some construction site. There's asbestos from uh, uh, the coating on pipes, uh, in, in buildings, uh, the steam pipes. Uh, there's uh, contamination all over the place from uh, uh, PCBs, uh, leaky transformers all over, you're, you're, you're next to, uh, you're, you're dealing with a lot of construction debris in the Bridgeport, Stratford, the, the, the neighboring uh, communities, that's, that's not gonna end, it's gonna last for years, could easily last ten years, which is the operating period you're, you're dealing with here. Uh, I, unless you know the truck driver, know that he's, what his time of departure from the source was, where, who tested it, what kind of certificate of compliance you got on the material, do you trust it, do you trust the truck driver? A thousand dollars between here and there can, can dump a load of, a fifty-five gallon barrel of liquid P- PCBs, or a, a, a fifty-five gallon drum of powdered asbestos that was used in, in welding as a, as a, a, a a dam to, 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 to shield heat from, from things, that, that type of stuff exists all over in, in Bridgeport, let me tell you, I know that for a fact. Uh, I'm concerned about that chain of custody and the validity of your certs. I don't, and I don't know what your uh, uh, material acceptance procedure is, I think that's something you're waiting for, but I would question that very carefully. I've been here forty-seven years, I've seen a lot, I've seen a lot of property developed that should never have been developed. Originally, the P O C Ds said they were to be left as habitat, because they were so rough, they were all rock, and the only way you could really use them was blast the rock, grind it up, and make money on the rock to pay for what you had to do to create a building site. That's what you're faced with here. It's a lot of bad situations, a lot of questionable things, and I question to the Planning and Zoning Commission here, does the town have the capability and the diligence to follow a project for ten years? We've had one that's been going on, the one that, this project, this area's been going on for what, thirteen, fifteen years? The same people that started it all aren't nowhere to be found, well, I can't say, actually, the people who started it are still around, digging holes. I don't know whether, you, you, it wouldn't be a big deal to dig one hole one place and then dump the material you didn't like or couldn't deal with, bury it somewhere else, right in Monroe. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm talking about that, over that period of time and the number of different people that would have to be involved. I got kids and grandkids in this town, and you're talking about G A A water and critical watersheds, this is nothing to fool around with. Health, safety, and general welfare is the, is the charter of this commission. You've got to pay attention to that level of detail. I personally think this is something the town probably got, sorry they ever got involved with, and the developers also, to be honest with you. But that, you've got to think that that's what could happen, and you've got to think about what's out there. There's, there's, there's polluted, polluted sites all over town, all over the towns around here. And re, repurposing the material that comes in here, as, as Mr. Ambrosi identified, you're not bringing clean material in here. To do this thing right, I think you should get natural material, virgin material, that's, that's certified to be virgin material, that hasn't, doesn't have 100-year history of, of, of development over the largest towns in the area. You'll never find out what's in that, 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 that material. I can guarantee you, it's probably got asbestos in it somewhere, whether it's from siding, if they bring, bring siding in, if they're bringing old crushed up pipes and, and, and things like that, that, that people shouldn't have been putting in, and it should have been taken to certified dump sites that didn't, and that stuff, and those conditions exist. And they're a reality when you start bringing in old construction material. I'll leave it at that, that you've got to think this one out carefully, there's a lot of hazard here. Mr. Maney's into it, Ambrosi identified a lot of it, Mr. Westland is, is sensitive to it, Mr. Glass hit on it, Mr. Green hit on it. Everybody here is pregnant with the, that, those thoughts. Do the right thing, think it out. And I think you ought to get deep involved in this, I think it's too big for the, the Monroe Commission to deal with without some expert advice and some good legal advice. Somebody's going to be hanging out here with a lot of legal responsibility if, if this is done wrong. Sorry. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Benofsky. Are there any other members of the public that haven't been heard from tonight that would like to speak on this application? Any other members of the public? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, is that someone?
Yes, just, just the intervenor, Joel Green for the intervenor. Mr. Chairman, I just want to indicate that the intervenor still has some presentation, and we would, you know, obviously it's late, but we would like to address the commission at the next session, and I, I don't know when that is, if you could clarify when the next hearing is.
Yeah, we're not going to close the hearing tonight.
I understand that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, Pat Sullivan from Coen and Wolf, I think we need to hear from Mr. Green. We, we can't wait until the next meeting and then hear what he has to say. I mean, when, when will we have the opportunity to respond to it?
Well, how much more do you have to say, Mr. Green?
I have quite a bit.
Right, I mean, it's, it's 11:20.
I understand, and, you know, I, I, you know, we're here, there's been a lot of questions, we actually haven't presented for that long, and Attorney Sullivan does not have, the commission can decide when to continue the hearings, though I think Attorney Schellenberg can guide you on that. There's no obligation to hear me now.
Mr. Chairman, everyone else is gone, the commissioners have asked their questions, and the public has spoken. You know, it's not fair for each time for Mr. Green to start again.
I didn't start again. I've been here, I've been ready to present.
You defer to the commissioners.
I defer to the commissioners for questions. I.
You can't go out of order and let the commissioners ask their questions when you haven't made your presentation. Now you're going to come to the next meeting and make a presentation? When we have, we have very few days left to, to, the applicant gets the last word, and the applicant gets to listen to what you have to say and respond.
I asked questions of my presentation.
I, I yielded for questions to Mr. Glass. I made that clear, and I reserved the right to address the commission. Now it's 11:30, and we started this at seven, seven o'clock this evening, and I think Attorney Schellenberg can guide the commission on this.
The other option is, the, the commission can schedule a special meeting. That is what we did with Wetlands. So, I mean, that is, that is an option. I agree with Attorney Sullivan, the applicant does get the last chance to speak and rebut. And, and time is getting short, on the other hand, it is late, so I, I just throw that out as a possibility.
We're not closing the hearing. Well, we're going to adjourn and reconvene the hearing at our next meeting, at which time the intervenor and the applicant can both present whatever other information they have. Is that correct?
Yeah.
My question is, is there going to be additional information that the, that the applicant needs to respond to? Is there only going to be one additional meeting? Is there going to be two additional meetings? You know, the applicant has made its presentation today, Attorney Green had the opportunity to make his presentation, and then he decided that he'd rather hear from the commission members first.
No, 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 I, that was my decision. Mr. Green was cooperating with my decision to go to the commissioners. There's no subterfuge on his, on his part. Now, Will, do we have time for another meeting?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought I was having problems with my microphone. Well, we have under our own time, really up to the next meeting. Now, we do have additional time potentially related to when the Inland Wellness Commission takes action. I'm not sure that leaves us with a lot of time, should they act before our next meeting. That may not give us any additional time.
I, I think the problem is, the, the way I read the statute, and I can take another look at it, but I believe there is, there is significant time to make a decision, you can wait for the Wetlands Commission for that purpose. But I don't think the statute gives additional time for the public hearing. Those are two separate things. So I believe the public hearing has to close by January 24th. And then if for whatever reason, the Wetlands Commission has not issued a report by then, you can, you have time to wait for that report in order to start your deliberations. So those are, those are two separate things.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps Mr. Green could put his comments in writing?
My concern, my concern was, if Wetlands determines before the next meeting, how much time do we get for that?
I believe that, I believe the commission would still have 35 days to make a decision.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for a minute, this is Attorney Finn, I want to, I want to pick up on what Attorney Sullivan said, I think there's, there are issues here about fairness, and it's not fair to give the intervenor two weeks to prepare his remarks for the next hearing, and then only give us 15 minutes or maybe 10 minutes to digest them during that hearing and respond. So I think the fair thing to do is to tell the intervenor that he, if he has comments, he should put them in writing within the next week, submit them to the commission, submit them to us, so we can respond, we can prepare our response. And if Mr. Green wants to present those comments that he's put, submitted in writing at the next hearing, fine. But at least the intervenor, I'm sorry, the applicant will have an opportunity to digest his remarks, just like he had an opportunity to hear our presentation and review our materials prior. So I think that's the fair way to go about this, and it, it, it's fair to both sides. So I think that's what should be done here, and I, I think that's the only fair way to do this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I would suggest, I would suggest that the parties not submit anything else, that the opportunity to submit materials be precluded, and that the parties just make, offer comment at this point on the application. I don't think that it's going to be that burdensome on the applicant to respond, and they have a skilled bench, and, you know, I, I don't think that's, I think that's commonly done, and it's not unfair.
Actually, I, I, I respectfully disagree, and if that's all there is, then there's no reason not to prepare those in writing, give us at least an opportunity to look at them. You can still present them if you want, Mr. Green, at the next hearing, but there's nothing, you have a week, you, you have a week to do that, you're, you were prepared to make those remarks tonight, you know, I'm sure you have an outline, let, let's be fair to both sides here.
This is not about preparation, this is about not turning this into a workshop. If we're going to submit materials, then you're going to want to submit materials, then the materials are going to have to be presented to the commission, they're going to have to digest the materials. I think.
Mr. Green, I'm not talking about new materials, I'm talking about hearing your arguments, just like you've heard our arguments throughout this. You also had an opportunity earlier today to make arguments, I actually thought those were your arguments, you listed five points, you could have made all your arguments at that time, I don't know if it was a strategic decision to wait and to defer, but you now are trying to hamstring the applicant by jamming us at the next hearing, that's not appropriate.
I am not trying to hamstring the applicant, Ted Paul.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Okay.
Um, can I, can we, Mike, can you, is it within your power to decide? We got one more meeting with this left. Can you make a decision, or can the commission make a decision on if they should submit, if they should not submit? Like, like, I, I don't want to hear these two fight anymore, I'll be honest with you, it's 11:30, I've had enough. I, I don't want to hear bickering, I don't have any, I don't have any patience left for it. Can we make a decision now on if they're going to present something or not? Because I'm done.
I think, I just wanted to mention, do we have to vote right now if we wanted to continue the meeting past 11:30 tonight? Isn't that?
Not correct.
No.
Okay.
Now, what is that? What time, Will? 12?
There is no time.
We would have to vote, we would have to vote to start a new item.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Mr. Green, do you have any, any new allegations or anything substantive that they're going to have to respond to and prepare to respond to, or do you just have general comments?
I have comments about the application as it presently exists, and I have questions for the intervenor, I'm sorry, questions for the applicant. I don't intend to submit any new materials.
All right, then. If you have questions, how are we supposed to answer them without having seen them in advance to prepare? That's Attorney Warren for the record.
I'm, I'm asking you about information in your application or not in your application, that's why.
Well, if, if there's any validity, it's Pat Sullivan for the applicant. If there's any validity to any of the questions that Mr. Green has, then we, we would need to be able to modify our application by the next hearing. So he can't go back to the next hearing with whatever he has to say, he's just said he's got a detailed and long, you know, something that he can't do in five minutes.
This is not a workshop, this is a public hearing.
Barbara? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I would like your advice.
I am concerned, I, I am concerned about the applicant having an appropriate time to respond. Um, you know.
Then should we go ahead and continue the hearing tonight?
Mike?
Well, clearly we have to continue the, the hearing. I'm questioning whether we might need a special meeting at some point, perhaps in between, because if the intervenor has a significant presentation to make, which the intervenor is entitled to do, but the applicant has to be able to have time to respond.
Mr. Green, how much time do you think you'll need?
To do what?
To finish your presentation tonight.
Well, I have a number of questions, it could be about a half hour, 45 minutes, I don't know, depends on some.
Mike, can I ask one question of Barbara?
Yes.
Can, can the applicant extend it if they, you know, the hearing? Can't they extend it? If they request it?
We're running out of, we're running out of time, we, we, with all of the, the applicant, you know, under the statute, can only give a maximum of 65 days, and then we have the 90 days under the executive order, and believe it or not, we're, we're running up against all that time. I think we've determined that January 24th is the day the hearing has to close.
Then go ahead, Mr. Green, and go ahead with your presentation.
Try to talk as fast as may.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Green.
All right, so, um, all right, my first question is on, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Solley. There's been a lot of discussion, well, let me get it a little bit organized and see, you give me one moment, let me see if I can, I have a.
If you could put all of your questions together in one presentation, and then allow him to respond at the end, that would be.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
Rather than a back and forth.
So I have several things I want to cover, and respond to some of the comments that were made, but I also have questions. My first question is, deals with this material protocol, and I guess comments were made this evening, there's been some issue as to what happened after the applicant acquired the property, and as I understand it, the applicant continued to import material into the site, you heard Mr. Metropolis talk about the material that was dumped on the site. And my question is, when did the material protocol go into place? By Mr. Carp?
I think, I think Commissioner O'Reilly said you're going to ask all your questions and I'll respond.
And you ask all your questions and then.
That's right, ask all the questions, and then we go.
No, I can't ask all the questions, because they won't all get answered.
Usually how our meeting.
I'll answer everyone, I promise.
Back and forth questioning.
I'm sorry?
Usu- usually our meetings go, the process is, the applicant presents, the public speaks, asks all their questions, then the commission asks the questions, then the applicant answers the questions. It's usually not a constant back and forth.
Except that I am an intervenor, so I'm a party to the proceeding, I'm not the public. So I have the opportunity to ask questions of the, of the applicant.
Okay, are they required to answer the questions?
Yeah.
There's, I, I, this is Attorney Finn, you know, Mr. Green, as the intervenor, you don't get to dictate the procedure, this commission has a procedure, Chairman O'Reilly has indicated that you should ask all your questions, and then the applicant will respond. So let's follow what the custom is of the commission, you don't get to dictate the procedure here, the commission does.
Mr. Finn, as you, as you may know, I am an intervenor, I enjoy the same status as a member of the commission, the commission has been permitted to ask individual questions and solicit answers.
I don't think you have the same status of the commission, you're a party, you're not the judge.
Excuse me. Mike, I don't think, Mike, I don't think this is a good idea. Mike, I'm not in favor of this.
We're not moving forward at all with this, we're spinning in a circle, it's 11:37. If you want to talk.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind sticking around, but I'm not going to have a bickering back and forth, he's not going to ask all the questions, I, 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 I'll be honest with you, Mike, I can't do it.
Let me ask you a question, what's the difference if he answers the questions one at a time, or if he answers them at the end? It doesn't make a difference.
He's trying to delay, he's trying to delay the whole thing here. We take control, we should take control of this, ask the questions, and then we go on.
Why can't you ask a question, get an answer?
Okay, Mr. Green, go ahead and ask your question, Mr..
Mr. Chairman, here's what, here's what I will do, in response, out of deference to the commission, and I understand that it's 11:38, I will submit a written response and a written. I will submit a written response and a written, uh, I'll, I'll provide my presentation in writing to the commission. I will, but this is a public hearing and there are rules for public hearings. The applicant has to submit their application and all of their materials. You're familiar with this as a commission. There is an opportunity to respond, but this is not a workshop. This is a public hearing. So I will submit my entire presentation in writing for the commission in advance of the next meeting. But I disagree with Attorney Sullivan that the applicant can simply now amend their application to address the information that I submit to the commission. And.
Okay, Mr.
I will submit, I will submit my presentation in writing well in advance of the next meeting. But I don't think it's fair to then allow an amended application to which the public and the intervenor don't have an opportunity to respond. So I will raise my issues in writing, but I don't think that the application should be permitted to be amended. Just as in a regular hearing that occurs in a single session, the applicant doesn't run out of the room and just file a new application without the opportunity of the public and the interviewer to respond. So I'm happy to submit mine in writing, but I don't want to start a new cycle.
Okay. Well, thank you.
To that, to that point, Mr. Green though, but to, to that point, Mr. Green, you're, you're, the commission's concerned about you causing delays. What, your first question having to do with what's happened since the property owner acquired the property? How does that have anything to do with the application before the commission and what we're proposing to do as part of our application?
Because this is a violation and you have said, Mr. Soli, so far, and I've kept track of this. I've heard that there's 1,200 pieces of paper, 12,000 pieces of paper. I kept notes on this. There's, Mr. Karp said there's 30 reams of paper. I'm still not clear on whether you have paperwork on all of the 85,000 yards of material. You haven't provided that to the commission. Commissioner Ambrosi has asked you for material repeatedly and you have said on the record that you would provide it. You haven't. You said tonight you provided a sampling of some of the intake materials. And then in the same session tonight, you said you've provided all the materials. And what I'm trying to understand is, does this commission have paperwork for all of the 85,000 yards that you estimated have been brought to this site? And Mr. Karp offered to let us see it and at this point, we're happy to look at it if that's what it takes. We'll come to the site. I've also heard there's two filing cabinets. We're happy to go through it. So you'll forgive me, but there are questions by this commission as to the quality of the fill. You've also stated that all the fill is clean, but you haven't provided paperwork. You've provided an expert, an incredible expert who's done some testing, but all of the material has not been tested. There were test holes. So I'm trying to determine for this commission, and there have been a number of questions tonight as to whether the material, whether you know about all of the material that was brought on the site, whether you have all the documentation for all the material, and I'm talking about the material before May of 2019, so that this commission can really understand what was brought to this site, what's in the ground on this site and what's going on. That's why I'm asking those questions. And I'll write this out for you and I'm, I'll, I'll provide it. But I do have a lot of questions on this and I've gone through your, the testimony by the, by the applicant. And I do have a lot of questions because so many different things have been said. We've also heard that you're only using clean fill. Now, tonight, you testified earlier that it was soil that was being brought in, but then on questioning by Mr. Ambrosi, it turns out that you're going to be processing demolition material on the site and trucking material off the site. And I, I just can't, the, the pieces keep moving. So I will submit everything I have in writing. But what I don't want is a whole new application coming in that I then can't respond to. So the pieces, it's got to stop moving. The target's got to stop moving. Then I will make my comments on the state of the application as it exists. And this commission, after the applicant proves me wrong and says it's here on page, whatever, it's all in the application. Then this commission can make a decision based on this record, but the target has got to stop moving.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Please submit your presentation and questions, but then at our next regularly scheduled meeting, you'll be able to make an oral presentation. And then we'll expect answers or a, to the questions from the applicant. At that point, we will probably close the hearing and if we go on to approve it, there will be conditions of approval that they'll have to comply with. They're not, so that's how they'll change their application, not change the application prior to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Just one point. I, Mr. Green indicated that he, he would get those two, those, those questions to us in his presentation well in advance of the next hearing. Could we have a date stated for the record, Attorney Green? Are you thinking a week from now?
If I may, Mr. Gresta, when does your packet go out?
We require materials for pre, for meetings to be the, the Tuesday, the week before the meeting by four o'clock.
So the next meeting is when?
The 21st.
So what is the?
Do we do Tuesday, the 20, the 12th?
Oh, next, by next.
Next Tuesday at four o'clock.
It'll have to be done. So by, is that, is that the date the packet goes out on Tuesday, the 12th?
We require the materials to be given to us so we can collate it into the packets.
Okay. So it'll be by Tuesday, the 12th.
Thank you, Attorney Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for, uh, oh, can I make a, can I just make one suggestion? The inland wetlands meeting is the evening of the 12th. This may all become academic. Mr. Mr. Gresta, if I bring you hard copies of everything and electronic copies on the morning of the 13th, well, it doesn't matter.
I can't hold you to a different standard than other people.
All right, four o'clock in the 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the commission. I apologize. I know it's late and I appreciate your time and I appreciate the length of time this has taken and I know this is difficult. And I can't thank you enough for your patience.
Thank you. So we're going to adjourn this hearing and reconvene. We do have some, we do have deliberations to do still.
You're going to have to vote individual things to be added, to be taken up on the agenda now that it's past 11 o'clock.
Well, we have a draft resolution that we need to vote on.
That's fine. You just need someone to first add it to the, to, to continue the meeting for that purpose.
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting to deliberate on the draft resolution.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second. I have a motion, I have a second. So we have a draft resolution.
Need to vote, Mike.
Vote on what?
The motion we just made.
All right, we'll call the roll. Maini?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Westland?
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Yes, it's habit. So will, this is SCP Site Development Plan Approval 2020-04, File Number 1624A, 246 Main Street. Can you give us a brief presentation of this, Will?
Yes, this is a draft resolution for SCP 2020-04, File 1624A, 246 Main Street for the extension of space for biometrics into existing space of an, this is expansion by a non-conforming manufacturing use in a retail business district. Regulations permit extension of exist, into existing space by a non-conforming use up to 100%. The proposal is for reaching a threshold of 89%, I believe. There are no physical improvements to the exterior of the facility. This is actually a reduction in parking requirements and there's adequate parking. And that's really it in a nutshell.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the SCP as drafted.
Motion to accept SCP as drafted.
To accept, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Maini?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. All right, so then we will not deliberate on SCP 2020-02, which we closed tonight. We'll have to put that off due to time. We do have a couple of things that we want to talk about. Is Rick still here? Yes.
Yep. POCD, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, we have scheduled a meeting on January 28th. That's a Thursday, 7:00 PM. Francisco will be preparing an outline like he did at the last meeting on the topics of discussion. Our staff will send that out to you. And then lastly, Mike, are you going to throw out some dates for the zoning subcommittee?
Well, we, we talked about Thursday, right, or a Monday?
Yeah.
So, um, how about the 18th?
What's, what day is that, Mike?
Monday, the 18th. Monday, one Luther King's birthday.
The town hall is closed. You can't have.
Closed, yeah. All right, we can't do that, right?
Okay, how about the?
Can you do Tuesday, the 19th?
How does Tuesday, the 19th sound?
That works for me.
I'm generally not available on Tuesdays.
What's that?
I'm not available on Tuesdays.
Okay.
Wednesday, the 13th?
I could do Wednesday. I could do any of those days.
What? I'm sorry, Mike. What'd you say? Wednesday, the 13th?
Wednesday, the 13th of January.
That's next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, what time, Mike? Five or 5:30?
This would be a subcommittee meeting, Rob. That would be your first one.
Yeah. What, what time would it be?
Usually it's early, 5:30.
Okay. How long did it usually go?
Like this meeting. Five hours.
You never know.
Not that long.
Rob, maybe an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah. I'm good on Wednesday.
Uh, Mike, I'll be honest with you. It has, I'll be there closer to 5:45.
Okay.
That's not going to work.
Leon, are you okay?
I'm good.
You guys can start without me. It's not very formal.
Uh, Rob, is that too early for you?
No, no, 5:30 is good. That'll work.
All right. All right. Sounds like the 13th then.
I'll get there as soon as I can, Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you want to close it, Mike?
Yeah, well, challenge, ten a motion to, um, close the meeting.
Put a bet? Motion to adjourn. Second.
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 All those in shape?